Scott, if you wouldn't.
Yeah, that's what he's gonna lose it, doesn't want to damage it.
Yeah, yeah. I have to dust it from time to time, but it's, it's really special. They did a whole presentation for him and it was really cool because I went to his chess and my grandmother had all kinds of things from the World War II where they had extra credits to buy extra butter and sugar because she did lots of them, just gas, doctors, things that you can't comprehend, you know?
Our life is terrible. We have to wear masks. We are sacrificing more than this in that generation.
Any generation.
Yeah, we have to wear a mask. It's inconvenient, so we have to have blackout curtains.
So we're running live, so.
Oh, thank you.
Well, they deserved it. I don't think there were any groups on time.
I don't think there's anybody on there yet, so.
But yeah, I mean, I remember my grandfather on my mom's side, he.
You don't like it at all?
Yeah.
Don't be fooled, that's just how.
I'm looking forward to that.
The military had sixteen year old, his brother's ID was overseas for a year and a half on Navy destroyer when they probably found out. It was like years, months or eighteen.
And then he went back.
Yeah, and he really wanted to be involved with the World War II, was too old, so he became a block person who went around every night to make sure that one building, you know, they had those.
No, she's on my side. We rearranged everything.
Yeah, it's amazing. We don't need to know.
Because she said she was afraid of him.
Understandable.
That's, that's a hint when I'm during the meeting if I want to get things going.
Do you want to stay there or do you want to go there?
He's up there.
I'm good with wherever you would like to be.
Very, very much. This is morning John, all the time. It didn't matter if you tried to work with everybody, it pretty much threw us off for half hour. You got your tracks on your four wheel yet? You're gonna get lots of snow this weekend, aren't you?
I'm hoping we do and I, who takes them off anymore?
Well, you do at three o'clock in the morning about two miles ahead of you.
Yeah, but that's because I rip them off because I'm not.
Right. What's up, Jeremy?
Not in paradise.
Is that superheroes? Spiderman, Spiderman. Oh, wait. I'm saying Spiderman.
I sent the whole way.
You have a spot. They moved you back to your regular spot.
But can she tell?
Is there a chair?
You in contact? There are contacts? I didn't even notice.
I only like, you look like you were like.
I should have.
It's circle.
I heard somebody got rolled by a tractor in your neighborhood.
That is true. Yeah, it was Laura. Yeah, no, he's okay then.
I have to make a court call. Schedule the court at nine. They shouldn't have time that, so.
Easy, should be about to be presentations.
Yeah, that's basically.
Emma, do you want me to pass these out to everybody?
No.
Just mine. I know you told me that I was.
No, but that's such another thing, sorry.
No, you're fine. Multitasking.
Two months to go and I figured out how to do.
Yeah. Well, it's amazing.
No, something else. But you're right.
Supervisors, are you ready? Good morning and welcome to the November third, twenty twenty regularly scheduled board supervisors. Please join us while we do the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two subordinates to add to the agenda. If possible, number subsequent one to move and discuss or take action to confirm the continuance of a local emergency in Trinity County due to wildfires and find that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of board subsequent to the agenda being posted, the urgency is that without confirmation, the proclamation will expire and the conditions will likely continue.
Make a motion? Second. So the agenda language reads adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in Trinity County due to wildfires, including in the August fire wildfire complex, specifically the Hopkins fire and the Salmon complex.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Grove and a second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
All right, subsequent item two, move and discuss or take action to confirm the continuance of a local health emergency in Trinity County due to unhealthy air quality caused by wildfires and find the need to take immediate action came to the attention of board subsequent to the agenda being posted, the urgency is that without confirmation, the proclamation will expire and the conditions are likely continued. The agenda language is to adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local health emergency in Trinity County due to unhealthy air quality caused by wildfires.
A second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Grove and a second by Supervisor Chadwick. Supervisor Chadwick, how do you vote? Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I also have a, some business too, real quick. Been advised by our council that five point three should be pulled due to pending litigation.
So I know that there are members from the public, both present and on Zoom. I believe some of them have actually taken the day from their work schedule, so I'm going to allow public comment during that assigned time.
Yes, there's nothing that prevents a public comment on the matter because it's being pulled from the agenda, so our public comment allows for items to be discussed that are not on the agenda.
Do you have any other announcements?
I have a clarification, so you're suggesting that any comments due to that would be made during our normal public comment?
Yes.
So that, that was my, I, what I was saying was during the five point three, but you're saying that we'll open it up this morning so the people don't have to wait until the afternoon.
Yeah, we follow that. We follow normal procedure and have our public comment prior to the consent calendar. And if they choose to speak on items that are not on the agenda at that time, they're free to speak on any item and address the board.
Okay, so for those that are watching on Zoom and in the audience that are present, five point three has just been pulled from today's agenda and because it has been pulled, you can speak to it at public comment this morning rather than waiting till this afternoon. So thank you for that clarification. At this time, we have been taking presentations to the board prior to public comment because that answers a lot of questions from the public. Yes, Supervisor Finley?
I just sent out the email with the updated Zoom information and I'm getting a message back saying it's not valid. And it's from people that wouldn't be wanting to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
You're asking a lot of you. It's not the thing that works like a bulldog.
So HHS and.
Yeah, I received a text from Liz, the deputy, that there'd be no reports on the one point one. Nothing needed report.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. And so we do have a presentation on the wildfires currently burning in Trinity County and they're waiting. Is it Zoom?
It's not. John, are you getting into Zoom?
Am I getting what?
Are you into Zoom?
No.
Yeah, mine won't let me in either.
Okay, so the error is that the agenda that was posted on Friday has a three at the end of the passcode and it should be a four.
Point of order, I don't see how you can continue this meeting because this has been broadcast to hundreds, if not thousands of people. I think you need to continue this meeting. Discontinue. I couldn't understand what you say, continue or discontinue. To another time. So can you email or text Margaret?
She's up front, let me see if I can.
We're gonna take a twenty minute break. We'll resume at, we'll resume at nine thirty.
I was wondering what was going on. What's happening here all of a sudden?
So we'll, we'll back to anything. But not a bad way to shoot, not that.
But it doesn't hurt us to listen, you know?
Mr. Jordan.
I'm texting you. I just got it.
You all migrated. You'll lose that. I forget that it's live on that.
I sent it to all my constituents.
So people go onto our website?
Do you get, you get an email from me whether there's always a board near or not? Then you don't.
Never mind, register.
Yeah, no, I've got two more, three more.
Okay.
But I send it out to constituents that ask or are in my district and I ask for comments and questions or and usually directions.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's done. Sorry about that.
No, I did, I got the text that nobody could see the Zoom.
Oh, no, thanks.
And I didn't want you guys to continue.
No.
You wore, you wore on my Friday.
Scott, we're on a, we're on a break until nine thirty. Apparently the agenda has long Zoom and.
Yeah, I had the wrong password. I just had to put you in your place, yeah.
Trying to protect Trinity County.
No, there's a bunch on there.
Forty-three people. That's about average, isn't it?
That's above average.
That's more than normal.
Okay.
It was when I was over making coffee.
This morning?
Yeah.
So in the past, we haven't had that.
That's right.
No, there's always been a passcode.
Uh-uh.
It just automatically went in.
Yep, when you press your Zoom thing, it automatically goes and trust me, I've had to re-enter it several times during a meeting. It's, it's always been passed.
I've never had that.
Not for how I get in.
You can do both ways.
When you're magically, you just press the highlight.
You can just click the link.
Or if you're using internet and Zoom. You just press the highlight and then push in. If I do that, I have no sound because of latency and you have the same problem with hues.
Did you activate the code today?
I had to use a code today, yes.
So it won't work either.
Well, so you use a different code.
No, I did that too.
The code was just sent out.
Margaret's still on her call, but she said that there was a update that came out that said minor technical issues do not constitute violation of the program. The password typo was corrected. It is now correct online. An email was sent out to the entire distribution list of everybody who's got the original distribution list and went and looked, bought the new information with the corrected password. Everybody has the same access to the corrected information. The only people that are gonna have to read that information now are people who have printed their agenda prior to us correcting it and did not need it.
That is very important, you know, to bridge out to one of their supervisors.
Or when they're also, also going to, or when you're getting the error message, go back online and look at the agenda to make sure you have the information correct and then the correct information is out there.
And the links don't work?
And normally should still work, yeah. So that's.
Their advice is give it twenty minutes for people to figure it out and then.
Yeah, we're on break. We're on stop till nine thirty.
Yeah, she thinks she was up next on her phone when I left, so she should be back in a minute. She'll be able to do some more actual.
You just sent us a note.
Suzie sent it out at nine fifty.
Emma?
From my email, yeah.
At what time?
Eight fifty, sorry.
So how can the codes use the same code as on my agenda?
It's off by the number at the end. It's a four instead of a three.
Right, that says four and then you're going to.
Right.
No, your agenda says three. No, it says four.
Passcode, not the ID.
Got it, got it, got it, got it. I see what you're saying.
Thanks.
Like, wait a minute, sure.
To see if you're.
How did you put an address that hasn't read? What did you print down, Julia?
Yes, Ms. Morris is now connected.
What?
Yes.
So we do have an update. Yeah, he's waiting. He's been waiting.
Yeah.
From the divorcees? Okay, he's waiting, very patient. Yeah, I did that and I've been pursuing.
First, there's nobody, I mean.
Mike's watching.
Is there mics or anything?
Yeah, they're probably waiting. Anyway, just so you know.
It's fine, Jerry.
It's fine, pretty well.
That's fine.
Answer some cool questions.
Oh, yeah. It should be fine, but everything.
Yeah, that was looked at a while ago up here because the hydrogen seems to take a lot of energy to make, so cheap power to make hydrogen. One of the things was. Yeah.
We tell everybody that we will be there.
I thought Bobby did when she.
Just put it in a big balloon and float it off. Warm everybody up.
Just saying that the board is recessing, so I think.
Darren, did you mute it? Cause it's saying there's a lot of sound right now.
No, we did.
We didn't.
We muted the zoom because we're on break.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that would be easy as.
I think they realize we might hear them off book conversations, muted themselves.
Right.
It's funny, cause first the chat said, did they realize that the audio is off? They pointed it on it and then we muted it. Now they're like, why are they muting?
Our sound is, we may be, we're muted through Zoom, but we are still live on.
We're having some technical difficulties, so we're trying to get everybody back online. The passcode is wrong, so we should be, we're on a break till nine thirty. We'll be back a little bit. Will you be able to get on? Yeah, yeah, we're having some technical difficulties, so we got to get that taken care of and we'll be back on nine thirty. All right, thanks, sir.
If not, I can just read the transcript. It usually is.
I did not think about this. I don't know if somebody sent it.
Because we're not presenting it to an actual person.
We're gonna go ahead and mute it.
Oh, okay.
Anytime would you?
Okay.
We're not presenting it somewhere.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I'll be on my feet.
No worries.
You never know, so. It'll be just easy to read.
Yeah, I didn't think about that.
Is he paying? No. He was trying to talk about changing his properties and I'll hear him raise it down at N S U D Forest something. And I told him that you guys would be somebody to probably help him do that.
Sure.
Let's see what he does. I hope it was stuff.
Little long process.
Yeah, I hope it was stuff. I says, that's, I don't want to learn that. And then people in town that know how to do it.
Okay, cool, yeah.
I want to say we're just tired of stuff. I want to say we're just tired of stuff.
Supervisor Chadwick. Yeah, we think it's your intent to purify, you know, every comments.
Yeah, it's okay. But we're getting tired of so many people are asking.
Yes, sir. That was the clarification.
It was apparently the sound went bad right by our record. So some people didn't hear.
I would probably after presentation reiterate that.
Listen on, I'll send back over. They could pull my responses. Pull the, the other out.
Oh, thank you.
No, I did that. Yeah, I only end.
Wow.
He was.
Thank you.
Okay.
enduring that technicality. We have heard from county council. Ms. Suzie, would you please report out for county council?
So I checked with county council while we were on our break and Margaret had advised.
We're getting a little feedback, sorry. I disinfected everything, so you can take your mask down if you're comfortable.
Margaret had advised that there was a case that had gone and, um, technical, minor technical issues on the agenda do not constitute a violation of the Brown Act. Therefore, at the board's pleasure, you are able to continue this meeting as presented. I'd like to add also that we have updated, the information was updated and the correct information is available to all online. And an email was sent out to the distribution list this morning before the meeting started, advising anybody who gets the agendas be that way, that there was a typo and it gave them the corrected information and invite that it was updated online as well.
So I appreciate that update and because we have time sensitive materials, including two emergency declarations, we will proceed to today's meeting. Next on the item list is Ron Watson, I believe, with the U S Forest Service, update on the fire services. There will be no COVID presentation and then we will have public comment after the presentation. Welcome and good morning to the Attorney of County Public, or Board of Supervisors meeting. Are you with us, sir?
Uh, we're with you.
Um, we're having a little audio. Uh, hold on one moment. Let me know when I can tell them we're good to go.
I haven't tested that, please.
Can you test your audio, please?
Yeah, this might, this is it, any better?
Yes, it's much better, thank you very much. Please proceed and welcome.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, good morning, Chair Chadwick, members of the board. My name is Dennis Rain, I'm the liaison officer with California Incident Management Team 14. Uh, we are currently managing the north zone of the August complex. Uh, this morning we have Chance Stroff, our Operations Section Chief, that's going to give you an operational update. Then we have Brad Rust, who's the leader of the bear team. Um, that will give you a short, uh, presentation on what the recovery efforts are going to be. And then also in the audience here today, we have Steve Watkins, the team's incident commander. And I believe Scott Russell, the forest supervisor is, is on the line too. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer those at the end. So with that, I'll bring up Chance Stroff and we'll go with the operational update. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your time, Chance Stroff, one of operations section chiefs. Uh, we're going to start with the operational update. Uh, start here in the forest, uh, the root area and the root lake area. Mainly our operations, uh, consist of suppressing any areas that are rekindling due to the, the fall leaf layer coming down. As that's coming down, it's causing, you know, areas to rekindle. Nothing at this time has, uh, been too close to any structures. But we maintain a presence in there and, uh, we're having, you know, areas within a couple hundred feet of, of structures. So we're maintaining a good presence in there. Also, the secondary concern in here is for the stabilization of any, any dozer lines. So quite a few dozer lines went in and we're making sure that we're having good stabilization. So suppression repair activities include taking some of those dozer lines, trenching them to, to avoid runoff. Uh, that's occurring both in the root area, which is pretty much finished up, and then also in the root lake. Uh, moving up to the north here, uh, we're working on right along Highway 36. And, uh, there's some areas of heat in concern there. We have crews in there working, uh, over the last couple of weeks. They continue to work. Also to the north, we have equipment working and, uh, does also suppression repair activities with on the dozer lines and the hand lines, stabilizing that soil for when the rains do come later this fall. Um, we do have crews in this area. You can see there's not quite a black on the map. That's because it was real steep and hazardous for crews. However, there's been no movement in that area over the last four to five days. So everybody's feeling really good about that area. Uh, moving down here to the forest glid area, uh, we do have, you know, smokes popping up due to that leaf layer fall. But, uh, we do have crews in there and they're suppressing any areas of heat near any structures or along Highway 36. Uh, moving further down, uh, we do have some areas pockets of unburned fuel mainly by DP 127 here. And, uh, those continue to pop up. However, we do have crews in there working. We're also continuing to work through down along the dozer line and along the roads. You know, assessing any repair needs that can be taken, done quickly before any rains do come. And then also we're, uh, we're working with raids in the forest to prioritize, uh, those areas as we get equipment and more help in to fortify that. Moving down here to the south, there is a piece of open line, uh, near Round Mountain. And, uh, and the full buckscar also has a lot of snags. However, that hasn't moved in a few days. And so we're really feeling comfortable with that area, but we keep a presence in there to make sure that if something did come out, uh, we have, be able to take appropriate action. Uh, moving back down towards the bottom here, there's a few pieces of line that we're going to assess. We're actually moving equipment down, uh, right now to start suppression repair on, uh, in some drainages and near some drainages. Moving up, back up to the Ken Palm area, we're assessing and, uh, we're moving equipment around in that area to continue with the suppression repair. Uh, no real issues with rekindles that were quite, quite a long time ago. And, uh, we're going to continue, keep monitoring that area, but we're moving forward with the suppression repair as a main priority. And then moving up here to E 97, uh, there's quite a bit of suppression repair work in there. And so the main focus is stabilizing those hill slopes and making sure that it's ready for when the rains do come. In the report.
All right, thank you, Chance. Uh, and now hopefully Brad Rust could come on, uh, and has the ability to share his screen. And he'll give us a report on what the burn area emergency response team is doing.
Yeah, Brad Rust, U S Forest Service, I'm the bear team leader for the North August. What I want to do now is I'm going to try to share a screen. Uh, let's see. Right now it's disabled. Um, I'm trying to share the screen right here. There we go. And it should. Should pop up, does everybody see that?
Yes, it's up, sir.
Okay, good. So we'll just start from the beginning with this PowerPoint presentation. We focused, uh, pretty much on the north part of the August complex. The August complex is the largest fire in California history. And what we did, we, we focused our bear effort addressing the immediate postpart roof C situations. We know that protecting life, property, natural and cultural resources. So what we try to do is we, we try to have some deliverables to cooperating agencies. For instance, the sole burn severity map, sole erosion response, watershed response, debris flow response. And then we try to determine what the values at risk are and what threats impact the common values of risk. And then we propose treatments. And usually with the forest. And usually with the Forest Service, we got up to here for that money to be available and we want to try to get implementation done before the first big damage in storms. Now, obviously, this year, we're kind of challenged because of the lateness of the containment. So right now, it's running about 63%, I mean 93% last time I checked in Insuip. And the current size is 1,932,649 acres. We assessed 551 for 93 acres. So it's kind of like a long gap break right here. You see that blue line and down in this chunk right here in Caldwell, this whole northern piece we did. So you can see the break out. Might have been a Forest Service land in private with a mix of BLM and Indian land, I mean Bureau of Indian Affairs in state. So we did a imagery that we've blown using Landsat imagery and then we ground-truthed this. So this is originally was urban area reflectance classification. What we do is we go to the field and look at the soil and see all badly as burned and the vegetation and adjust it. So this is adjusted map. It's called the Soil Burn Saguaro Map. And you can see the acreages low and unburned to very low, occupies about 60% and about 40% is moderate to high. So if you look in one area in particular, it's the upper MAD got hit pretty hard and going down into Ruth Lake. So that is an area of concern. We're expecting, you know, let me go up to the next slide. The erosion rate's going to be in that area, the upper MAD is about 16.9 tons per acre on the average. It's running from the low green, as you can see in these areas, from 82 tons per acre to zero, and then to the high of about 39 in the upper headwaters of the MAD. So another areas of concern is the South Fork to the Trinity River. So we're thinking that when it gets down here to Forest Glen, on the average, is going to be about 7.4 tons per acre. And when it gets all the way down to Hayford Creek, it's going to be diluted in this area that didn't get burned to about 4.8 tons per acre. Now, you can see this variation all the way up to 80 tons per acre and there's some areas in particular that are going to be hit harder. This is upper part of South Fork Trinity. And then there's a spot, it's a little bit above Forest Glen, there's going to be quite a bit of erosion coming down. On the other side as well, at 299, there might be some issues with some of the culverts being challenged by all the erosion coming down. So if you do the hydrologic assessment, again, Ruth Lake and Ruth, I mean Ruth Lake, there's a Ruth Lake reservoir. We do have some streams with sensitive species and there is some culverts that are identified by the road engineers who are being challenged. So we have different watersheds that we modeled and show right here. I don't know if you can see it that well, but the upper South Fork of Trinity, Upper Rock River, North Fork Eagle, Middle Fork Eagle, and then the South Fork of the Cottonwood Creek. The, yeah, upper headwaters of MADD River. Yeah, so what we did was we established what we call a port point, an area where we're concerned that there's going to be a increased risk of flooding. So we chose some spots that we wanted to model and you can see that there are these dark triangles here. So for Ruth, Ruth Lake, we chose the Ruth Lake reservoir, just about Ruth Lake, the gauging station, and then there's a bridge right here in the middle part that got burned out on MADD River. On the other side, we chose some other spots. You can see down here in the South Fork, we chose that spot and then some other spots up along the river to take a look at what's going to be coming down out of these severely burned watersheds. And then over here, for the North Fork and South Fork, and then some of these other spots for the North and Low. So these are the numbers and really the big hitter is there's a 1.9% times increase in runoff in Ruth Lake, Ruth Lake Gauging Station, Ruth Lake Reservoir. It's all running pretty high in those areas. You can see that we have the relative differences. A lot more flow in the Middle Eagle, North Fork Eagle. So the relative differences are lower than the Ruth Lake area. So also what we did, we did debris flow modeling and this is a USGS product and the probability of debris flow is based upon what we call stream segments and basins. And so what we did here, we showed the stream segments and the basins together. So what we used was, they, well, we didn't, we chose this as what we'd use, a 15-minute event with about 32 millimeters per hour intensity. And this is what we get. So again, the upper part of MADD River is going to be the most challenged. There will be some issues coming down here on the South Fork, but there's not much communities or that got many values at risk, maybe a little bit of water quality. Over here in Forest Glen, there's a couple drainages that will be challenged. So anything that has a red line, those are the areas of concern. This is just for probability. So the probability in these areas is pretty high, we're going to have some sort of event. The volume, though, is a little bit less than some of the areas like in comparison with Southern California, where the volume's going to be running from 1,000 cubic meters to 10,000 cubic meters to the possibility of 10,000 to 100,000, I mean 10,000 to 100,000, but nothing in over 100,000 cubic meters. So you can see those lines are mostly yellow up in here, a couple orange. There's some other drainages, you can see that the root area might be impinged. Root area is going down into range land, but the big area is coming in here to Ruth Lake. So the good news is there's a long stretch right here that a lot of this debris flow, if it does blow, a lot of it certainly will be catched before it makes it to Ruth Lake. So we also did a vegetative analyses, this ravage data, and it showed that there was a large portion of the watershed is completely burned. There's, everything is completely dead and everything will die because anything yellow and red is pretty much a dead tree. So a large swath of dead timber in here. This over here is just range, so there wasn't that much timber, but you can see some other sponsors, quite a bit of dead timber. So what we'll do is we're having a cooperators meeting as we speak right now. We're, we already provided the Soil Burn Saguaro, Soil Erosion, Hydrologic Response and Debris Flow, and we've shared that and we're coordinating with the local, state and federal and private entities to get them that information so they can plan for the winter and what they need to do to prepare. So for the Forest Service, Forest Service, we're probably seeing on roads, trails, putting out warning signs, giving them the noxious weeds, and then making sure the cultural sites are protected. So, you know, the other agencies, they will take their information and make a model if they're looking concerned about some culverts or if they're concerned about some facilities, they can use that information to model and we provided them all the databases to do that. So any questions?
Yep.
Yes, Supervisor Finley?
Browns Bridge, down below Ruth or around Ruth, familiar with it?
Um, no, I'm not.
Okay. If you could take a look at it and possibly talk to our Director of Transportation, Director Tippett, he has some information on it. It's, it was fairly well damaged in this incident. Thank you.
Any other supervisors have-
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So just very quickly, then, is that the little community that uses that bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, we heard about that. And the county and NRCS is down there looking at that currently.
Great, thank you. Anything you can do to help us would really be appreciated.
You bet.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
You're welcome.
Thank you for your presentation. I do have one quick question. I was glad to see that opening the roads was your top priority on that last list. There are concerns by farmer ranchers and timber industry on Highway 36. I appreciate that it was, there was one additional opening. Is there any estimate when it'll be back to full service so they could? Some of these are time-sensitive because of the weather's coming, so that was a question that has been requested of me, so I'm just asking out loud so if they're watching for your response and thank you.
Well, the Forest Service is prioritizing the road systems on the Forest Service land and then cooperates, working with the other, like SBI and some of the other, Trinity County. So we're working in concert in regards to keeping those roads open and so we've already started crews out there as we speak.
So is there any estimate? Excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Finley.
Highway 36 is Caltrans and Caltrans, when I was down there Friday, they have to do this work for safety. I guess they can either shut down the entire road and take care of it, probably a little bit quicker, or we can have some traffic coming through. Director Tippett of Caltrans, who really could answer that question.
Yeah, I have any queries into both of them, but since his was a top priority, I was hoping there was an estimate. Thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for your patience on our technical delay.
Chair Chadwick, can I have one more minute of your time?
Yes, please.
Okay, again, this is Dennis Rain, Liaison Officer. Just to emphasize, we did have a very good meaningful discussion with Caltrans and Trinity County Moes, the, I think overall, we're all in agreement that there's a huge amount of safety work to be done on Highway 36 to get it open, where it can be safely open and accessible for the public and Caltrans is taking the lead on that. I also have Scott Russell, the forest supervisor, is in the meeting and as well as Steve Watkins, the incident commander from the incident management team here. If there are any questions for Scott or Steve, we can do them now.
Are there any additional questions for Scott or Steve? No, I appreciate your report, Doug.
Doing their good work.
I hope you could hear the comments. There are no additional questions, but the board appreciates all the good work and your reporting out. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate the opportunity to present and any information that needs, please don't hesitate to reach out. Your staff has been very helpful in assisting us in managing the incident. Thank you.
So we'll bring it back to the board and we will be going into public comment. Before I read the statement about public comment, there was, I guess, some inquiries. Supervisor Finley has responded to them, but since he received the inquiries, what I will do is I will restate that item 5.3 has been pulled from today's agenda and we will open public comment and allow for public comment, including 5.3, since it is now off the agenda during public comment period. So you would, if you are here or on the line and wish to speak to that or on Zoom, you will not be waiting until the later in the day. You will be doing that during regularly scheduled public comment. So public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on subsequent board agendas. Since there are, since there are people in the audience that I believe are here, we will open it up to the audience prior to Zoom. Is there anybody on the board of supervisors that have received comments from public that can't be here, would like to talk on their behalf during public comment?
That's the chair.
Yes.
1.3 also with Trinity County Transportation Commission.
Oh, I am sorry. I thought that was after public comment.
It can be done after public comment. There's, if you want to make sure you don't forget it.
Okay, no. For some reason, I was thinking that was separate. Supervisor Ross?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. I have a comment from constituent that I'm happy to read for him from an item of the past, recent, recent past. So, "To whom it may concern," he's writing this to the board. "I am writing this letter representing several perspectives as the manager of the Amquah Bank, as an owner of three commercial buildings in Weaverville, including two in the historic district, and the owner of two businesses in Weaverville, including Main Street Shoes in the historic district. I feel strongly that my voice and concerns deserve to be heard. I would like to first state that I believe that the downtown area should be 100% retail, either restaurants or retail shops. I am also an advocate for restricting the parking to one to two hours." This is a response to our purchase last week. "That being said, I understand that that may be a pipe dream. I would like the county to commit to having no county cars parked on Main Street. I also believe that they need to provide several spots for 10- to 15-minute parking only on the subject property. I would also like the county to consider creating a public parking area. Perhaps the condemned building next to the theater could be repurposed, flattened," in parentheses, "and the entire corner could be made into downtown parking. I also wanted to mention that if this is handled in a proper way, I believe it could have a positive impact on the downtown businesses. My concerns are that based on my experience that the county has shown no interest in supporting local businesses in any way. Regards, John Woodhouse, store manager of Amquah Bank." Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Anybody else?
This is regarding 5.3. Do you want it now or?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is from Jeff Gadia down in Zinya. "Please allow current cultivators and good standing to use up the remaining available licenses and expand their canopies or code stack licenses. With a very good chance Trinity votes yes on the cannabis tax this time around, I'm sure the coppers would, could use the boost of full production of the allotment allotted licenses. I know myself and a few other licensed growers in Southern Trinity who lost something to the fire, we're hoping to make it up this coming season." And that's from Jeff. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other Supervisors with public comment? So, at this time, we will be opening up our public comment. There, the podium was wiped down, and if you have any concern, there is some wipes underneath the podium. If you want to wipe it down in between, it's totally up to you. If you are comfortable, it is easier for the board and for the Zoom people to hear you if you speak with your mask down. I know, I don't want to promote something that I get in trouble for, but some of us have, are very hard of hearing, and so if you use your mask, speak clearly, and there are disinfectants. At this time, the public comment is open.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Jake Grossman, Chris Hayfork. My comment may run a little long, and Madam Chair, with your permission, I would hope for a little more time. As some of you know, this past week, Trinity County lost one of its licensed growers. I'm here to remind everybody here that we're all human. We can't bully people and push people and toy with their lives to the point that it's not worth them living. Alec Hurst loved to fish, he loved to hunt, and he loved to grow weed. He bought a property, he came from Fort Brad, he bought a property here on the top of Orkin Mountain, and the first thing he ever said to anyone else on the property was that he bought this property because he could sit in the backyard next to his garden, and he could look through his scope, and he could glass some of the best deer on the west coast to hunt. He was one of the first people in this county to get a license in 2016, 17. He then spent close to a year trying to get the county to transition his license from just cultivation to a microbusiness. He named his business after his family, as Hurst Family Farms. He was so proud to have his family's name on a label of cannabis. Over, after a year trying to transition from cult, from just straight cultivation to microbusiness, the county somehow, the planning department, was not able to make that transition. On the day he was told to come pick up his license by Kim Hunter, he showed up at the planning department, and Kim Hunter was not there. He was then told by the ladies at the front desk, "Sorry, we can't take cash, it's his mistake, run up to the bank and get a check and come back." While he was at the bank, he received a phone call saying, "Sorry, Kim wants to talk to you about an issue with your license. Why don't you come back in Monday and set up a time to talk to her?" Fair enough. The next phone call he received about four minutes later was that Rob Barcelona was at his property abating here for quote-unquote "not having a cannabis license." When he returned to the planning department to talk to them, they said, "Sorry, you didn't renew your cultivation license, and we are no longer accepting new applications, so your microbusiness license is considered a new application. If you have a problem with this, you can appeal it to the planning commission." When I asked how long that would take and what he was supposed to do with the rest of the summer, they said, "I'm sure they'll be able to see you in the next six months." That was in the middle of this season. The abatement process started, and he continued to pay fines for $200 a day. Not enough to break America. Rob Barcelona continuously--
Jake, you can't hear it, but the timer is off, and if I allot you extra time, then I have to allot everyone, and right now--
Well, how would I use Alec's two minutes of public comment then?
I'm sorry, he has to do it in person.
Please do.
Because if I allow you, then I have to open it up to everyone, and I can't appear to be there.
Thanks, guys.
Go ahead and phase it to them, so we can see.
Keep killing people, guys. That's fucking cool.
Anyone else present for public comment, please step up to the podium.
Scott Meerson, lifelong resident of Hayfork. I'd like to quickly touch on two issues. One, we're talking about the fire issue. I know it's important for us to try and figure out how to clean up the mess, but I'm not sure how we do it, but somehow we have to get the state or people to understand that we need to prevent this. We need to move forward with some kind of action on our force to not just wait to burn up another piece of property or another house. I'm not sure how that works, but-- The other issue I'd like to talk about is the cannabis industry. I've sat on the sideline three years now watching, and decided this spring to get involved for basically, um, one basic reason, to allow Hayfork and the other outlying areas in the county to have some kind of economic stability, which we don't have. We don't have county offices, we don't have a mill, we don't have hospitals, tourism's basically nonexistent. But to have a viable community, you need some kind of economic stability, or you, you just don't have it. After our mill left, the town basically started to dry out. So, I just encourage the board to just try to simplify this process of getting people to come onboard on a white market legal industry. We can develop a fabulous industry here, which will contribute tens of millions of dollars to Trinity County. And by making it so difficult, this might, all we do is encourage the black market. That's all that's happening, you know? We need economic stability in the outlying areas. I've been here my whole life. I've watched the ups and downs and everything else, and I'm only involved for one reason. I have a responsibility to Hayfork, as a lifelong resident and owner, to try and supply that economic stability. I have a responsibility to 30-plus employees that I have to try and maintain their, their jobs and livelihoods. That's why I'm involved, and I've sat on the sidelines and watched and watched and watched. Thank you.
Chair Chadwick, Supervisors Lisa White from Lewiston. I'm here today to address the paralysis within the cannabis division of the planning department. Last meeting, I touched on the ordinance provisions and state SEQA statutes that are not being followed by our own county government. This inaction, though, translates into real hardship for people. You heard a little bit of, about it from Jake and Alec Hurst taking his own life. These are real people with lives, families, and dreams. Dreams of an America where a kid from Trinity County has no greater hope to stay here in this area and be successful than cannabis, there's no other industry, to immigrants from Eastern Europe and Asia who want nothing more than a better life for their families. Flora, my company, helps these brave people navigate complex and often burdensome regulations and requirements, more extensive than those of the wine industry and even more extensive than those of our food supply. We see firsthand every day the excitement and the desire to succeed, to be independent business owners, to hold the permit in their hands, to find success. These people empty retirement accounts and nest eggs in the quest to fulfill the American dream in this latest frontier of cannabis. Despite county code on the books to allow these dreams to come true, instead, these brave farmers now face ruin because the county has chosen to do nothing. Literally, nothing. Rather than processing documents whose review is paid for with renewal and application fees, this paperwork sits, and no licenses are being issued. Dreams are broken, and it was all right there. All right there in front of their eyes, they can almost feel that permit in their hand to hang proudly at their farm. Everything submitted to the county, the county asks for, everything, and still, nothing. Close your eyes sometimes and imagine what that must be like. How to not know how to pay your workers now because the county didn't act. How to not know how to pay your mortgage because the county didn't act. How not to feed your kids because the county didn't act, but instead to chose to do nothing and let the citizens suffer. For what? Really, for what? For what is the question? I can't answer because it makes no sense to me, so I ask you. For what? Stop this senselessness. No licenses may be the motive of TAA, but that was not part of the settlement agreement that this county is now acting like it is. Instead, direct the cannabis division to issue these pending renewals and licenses that have complied with all of the published requirements that is already allowed in Trinity County code. Please, on behalf of our farmers, choose the moral and humane course of action. Chair Chadwick, I ask that you agendize this topic for discussion and action at the next board meeting. Thank you for your time. If I don't see movement, I'm going to go to the Zoom. Thank you.
Good morning, Head Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisor Finley, CAO, and the Clerk. I'll be brief in my statements. By public recommendation from the grand jury in 2019, the cannabis licensing program has performed under unconstitutional structures since the start in 2016 under the urgency ordinance and the ad hoc committee. Albeit ad hoc committees are high-end vehicles, the grand jury publicly recommended that Trinity County ad hoc be dissolved for unconstitutional acts, as shown in this document, and a standing committee was to be established, which we have not yet seen. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, one member of the dissolved ad hoc committee is trying to ignore recusals, insert language, reinterpret his former definitions, and ignore state procedure on implementation. Although appropriate and incorrect, although inappropriate and incorrect procedure for a general law county, it is being ushered by county council arrogantly. My advice for the board members, especially Head and soon-to-be Head Chair, is to seriously question the ethics behind the actions taken. Alliances are being formed between anti- and pro-cannabis groups to allow proper state-abiding operations. Multiple national legal firms are now at the Trinity County gates. As the lawsuits begin to increase, and they most certainly will, every government official, employee, and council will be held responsible for their advice, actions, and votes. I ask that you please take a moment today to digest the public comment and what's being asked through unethical motions before casting any future votes on future agendas. Thank you.
Point of order, should public commenters be identified?
He stated his name, but they, they are supposed to state their name. So far, everybody has. I'll go back and watch the video, but, yeah, I think they do. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Chair Tom Balenko of Douglas City. I want to start with some good news. The, the Indian Creek project that's currently happening in Douglas City is even more impressive to see on the ground than it was in the planning stage. I know the county pretty much just stayed out of the way of that process, but I know it did come through approval both the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. Not that we need any more cars on the road, but if, if anybody's familiar with what that little stretch Indian Creek used to look like, and to see it now, remarkable. We're all curious to see what happens when the rains come, but I think it's a courageous project, and I think it's being executed well according to the design, and I'm glad to see something happening there after, after decades of a lack of connectivity between upper and lower Indian Creek. Onto other issues, maybe not so positive. The board may be aware that we had another updated settlement or status conference in the TAA lawsuit last Friday, and the reason, as you know, I represent some of the licensees that responded to that lawsuit, even though ostensibly it was TAA against Trinity County, they also named the license parties as the real parties of interest, so many of us filed a response. What we've seen is some change in, or let's call it clarification, in the way the state views certain legal situations. Especially, there was a case filed this year by the DEA against Bureau of Cannabis Control regarding license files. DEA subpoenaed 20 license files. These are not random files. These are files for people DEA believe had some violations in interstate commerce or something. California's position, the BCC, as advanced by the Attorney General in federal court, was there are privacy and trade secret concerns in these licensing files. So, it resisted the subpoena. Spoiler alert, federal court ruled in favor of the DEA. However, I think it's very important, it's worth looking into how the Attorney General characterized license files and the information in there. Our approach, Trinity County's approach in the settlement agreement has been to throw those files wide open to TAA, and I think that is no longer consistent with what the Attorney General thinks a licensing file should be subject to at the same amount of time. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. John Perhour from Jefferson City. In contrast to another speaker this morning, I think, I think it's an appropriate time to consider another cannabis ad hoc and offer some sort of guidance on these important matters. The room is full of cannabis-interested folks, yet again, another morning of this. It continues to gum up the workings of all other cannabis, or all other county business every day of every week, the last four or five years now. The, these important matters like a programmatic environmental impact report for cultivation, ordinance update, license, something as simple as license renewals. We really do need some leadership and some guidance from the Board of Supervisors, for staff and county departments, and I think it was about a year ago, you know, a little, little under a year ago, the existing ad hoc was dissolved. I know it was contentious, but at that time, I think Supervisor Finley questioned, well, is this not better, are these matters not better handled by staff? And, and at this point, it's been about a year now, and I would say we've seen zero progress on any of these important matters. Zero. We still don't have a retail license available. We still don't have a processing license available. It's harvest time, 2020, we don't have a processing license available in Trinity? We don't have an equity ordinance. Our, our other sister cannabis counties, they're receiving millions from Sacramento every year for their equity programs. This is easy stuff. We just need some, someone to stick their neck out a little and provide some leadership, and the prior ad hoc did a mostly good job of that, and I think it's time for another ad hoc or something like it, or a designated position within the county that's really going to take this bull by the horns. And right away, it's been a year, and we've seen nothing. Can't even get license renewals, so please consider this and please add it to the next meeting agenda.
Scott Watkins, Weaverville. I'm a member of the team of Bilderberg, which is a local licensing company that helps folks at the local and state level. We've been fortunate to have some early clients that are stretching beyond the borders of Trinity County. We're able to do work in other jurisdictions across the state, so what that does is it gives us a perspective on how other jurisdictions go about their licensing process. And what we've noticed is that there's, there's a lot of divide between policies and practices that occur, especially here in Trinity County. We've found that the process is extremely unpredictable, and anybody that's done real estate development for any period of time knows that you really need to have a predictable process. for any period of time knows that you really need to have a predictable process. You have years that go into these developments. As some of the other speakers have mentioned, life fortunes, family fortunes, go into these development processes, and to have an unpredictable process that changes without public notification ahead of time, it's just not right. Nobody else in the state of California operates like this. When it comes to SEQA and stacking, I think that some of our research into individual projects' impacts have highlighted the fact that SEQA sets default caps on the amount of cultivation you're able to do on a certain property. We've got a 100-acre parcel, and the environmental impacts and the thresholds of significance with those, especially when it comes to water availability and water supply or transportation, sets about a two-acre cap by default. So when we talk about, I'm getting some feedback, you mind okay? So when we talk about stacking, we need to understand the existing processes and the existing policies that have been in regulation for decades. We ask staff to restart the writing of the DEIR, focusing directly on thresholds of significance and spelling those out. We want to develop and disseminate a clear and predictable approval process for SEQA initial studies. We'd like all changes within the cannabis program to have an official announcement before that change is made. Sometimes staff are thinking about changes that are going to be made in the future, and they just stop processing things pending future changes, and that's not right. We want all new applicants to be able to enter the program once they've had an initial study or some other SEQA compliance document approved. It needs to open back up. There are people that have been waiting to get into this program since March, applications that were completed that were not allowed in the day that things closed. Open it back up, see who's interested, see how many people are interested, not just in stacking, but in new applicants. Thank you for your time.
We are going to go to our Zoom participants, and Ms. Emma is going to be calling your name out, as she has access to seeing who is online. Veronica Kelly Albies, you have your hand up?
Thank you. This is Veronica Kelly Albies from Douglas City. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Movement must happen with all residents in mind. When you, planning is so short-staffed, they are inundated with all the work that they have to do, both cannabis and non-cannabis-related. Lifelong residents continue to see their homes and livelihoods affected by cannabis businesses, whether they are in the cannabis industry or out. It needs balance. The hope for me is that more help is created for planning to better serve cannabis and non-cannabis projects. Cumulative effects must be considered, as that is where balance may be better discovered. Cannabis is not the only growing enterprise in Trinity County. However, it is a viable addition to our economy. We just ask for more balance and consideration to better guide the growth of the whole market to blend and balance, so non-cannabis doesn't have to consider leaving what they too have poured their entire life savings and hopes and dreams into, to only have it ripped away. So providing more balance, or more help to the planning department may help create that balance, so that is a consideration I just ask the board to consider as well. And that's all I had to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albies. Naomi Remson, you had messaged me with comments? There's a Naomi, and I'm not sure of the last name. If you're waiting to speak, please unmute. Naomi, if you're speaking, we are not receiving any of your audio. We will come back if you figure out on your end what's going wrong. We're going to proceed forward. We'll go to Rachel Wood. Rachel Wood?
Hi, this is Rachel from Hayfork. So I know a lot of the constituents will probably cover a lot of the other topics that need to be discussed today, so I'm just going to touch on actual stacking. The language that was removed from the ordinance removes both horizontal and vertical stacking. Horizontal is multiple sites per entity or applicant. Vertical stacking is stacking on the same parcel. So the language that was removed in the updated ordinance actually covers both, I believe the original language covered, one license to one entity and one parcel in Trinity County. So if there is a discussion on re-adding that language, you would have to consider that the county has already allowed horizontal stacking as par, of course, and so there are multiple parcels with the same applicant, the same LLC, but one cultivation per parcel. I believe that vertical stacking, stacking multiple licenses on one parcel, is environmentally more beneficial than having 530 individual sites. It's also more beneficial in processing times with the planning department. So I would please like you guys to consider to allow both vertical and horizontal stacking with a SEQA analysis and a SEQA compliance document that's been approved. Thank you.
Brian Tarble?
Brian Tarble, Hayfork. I'm a licensed cultivator here in Trinity County. I would just urge the board to re-agendize item 5.3 and address this issue. This is something that really needs to be shored up, or things are going to continue to go sideways. I feel as though some level of stacking might be appropriate, but parameters do need to be set upon it. The Trinity County Planning Commission 2018 recommendations might be a good place to start and to go from there. So again, I just urge the board to re-agendize this subject matter and come to a decision as quickly as possible upon this. Thank you.
Deidra? Deidra Brown?
Hi, good morning, thank you. I would just like to encourage the supervisors to please allow for provisional cannabis licenses to still be issued while the, so to allow the planning department adequate time to review the SEQA documents that are being prepared for each applicant and to not hang up licenses for people that have been operating compliantly for years now, many of them, and then have that taken away from them because of a lack of review time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albies. Is there anyone else on the Zoom who would like to make public comment? We are going to close public comment at this time and proceed to a presentation. I apologize. Normally, we only take the presentations of COVID and the emergency ones. So Kelly Zolotoff with Caltrans regarding item 1.3 received a presentation from Kelly Zolotoff with Caltrans regarding the State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, SB 45, in Trinity County. No fiscal impact. Supervisor Morris?
Yeah, I have a question, comment to our CAO based on public comment on many of these issues regarding planning and building. CAO Coons, you know, we know there's, all those three departments, environmental health, planning, and building are all very busy, and it's going to get busier with losing 280 homes in South County and wanting to rebuild. So I would ask that we, I know you've gone down this path somewhat, but that we look for some, at least in the short term, mutual aid to help those three departments at least help cover the issues going on in South County, not to mention our regular day-to-day business, whether it be at cannabis or development or a lot line adjustment, because we're going to see an increased workload as a result of, you know, rebuilding those homes in South County.
Yeah, I believe we're working right now on a resolution to bring the board to request mutual aid, so I will update the board as soon as that comes forward. Thank you.
Okay, so I've already read item 1.3, and Kelly is ready?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So I'm the new project manager for Caltrans in the Trinity County area, so I appreciate having the opportunity to address the board today. We do have two projects that are on your agenda. The first one is the Tom Bell project. It was finished up construction in August of this year. There seems to be some savings by the end of the construction, so we're looking at returning about $170,000 dollars back to the county, and I'm not sure exactly when that will come. Kelly Zolotoff had more information on that, but that will be coming back to the county in the future. And then the other job is the Denny project, and that one is still in design. We're looking at putting it up in early next year, calendar year, so it should be in construction next summer. Those are the two projects that are on the agenda. Anybody have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Supervisor Morris?
No, ma'am.
You have no questions from the Board of Supervisors. We appreciate you adjusting your schedule to fit this time slot. Thank you. Rick Tippett?
Thank you.
Is there anything you wanted to add? I see you're on.
Did you address the Denny left turn? Pardon? Did you do the Denny right?
Yeah. Okay, I'm not hearing Rick, so I'm going to move on to, go ahead. Rick, was there something you wanted to add?
Just that we appreciate all the hard work that Caltrans did at Tom Bell. We're able to wrap that project up in full budget. It turned out to be real nice, and we're happy to have it there, ready for the new job.
Thank you for bringing that to the board's attention. Under budget is always a happy sound. Okay, we're going to move on to consent calendar. Is the board prepared to go forward? Yes. Consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Is there anyone on the board that wishes to pull an item? Supervisor Morris on 2.6 and 2.7. Is there anyone from staff? Okay. So there has been a change, for those that haven't been following, in the governance manual, and this is the first time that we're implementing it. So for those of you in the audience, if you have any questions or comment, it'd be now, and then it'd be up to a board member to pull it. Seeing no public comment? Oh, I do, boy, that was really close.
Now, and it actually, yeah, took a little. Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Belenko, Douglas City. I want to comment on item 2.10. And reading the backup, I couldn't tell, number one, I'm in favor of extending, obviously, the contract for electronic monitoring, which is everybody's favorite ankle bracelet. What I couldn't tell from the backup is whether that program extends to our juvenile population, and I don't know if that is part of the contract, whether that's just an internal probation thing. I do not typically work in that side of the field. I did end up standing in the courthouse at the wrong time, I got a plaintiff's case like that, and a situation where ankle monitoring might have been an appropriate consideration, yeah, nobody wants to walk around with an ankle monitor, but at least you're walking around. I think it's a positive use of technology rather than warehousing people somewhere. So to the extent that that contract has anything to say about that, I'd like to ensure that we could at least extend it to juveniles and not that it's just adults. I don't know if the contract requires, I know we call the recipients of the ankle bracelet our clients, so maybe that is somehow different when you're talking about an adult client who is able to contract for this item versus a juvenile who might need someone to do that. But I would encourage the county to make that service available for juveniles who sometimes might benefit most from remaining in the community but having some monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for being the first to step up, and this is also a demonstration of how this new governance procedure will work. So please indulge me while we go through some housekeeping. So now it would be up to anybody, any member of the board, if they choose to, on behalf of Mr. Belongo, pull this item, because you feel you either, it's changed your vote, you do not want to agree in consent, or if you have any additional questions or comments. I would like to state that we have a probation officer in the room, and Mr. Lance, if you don't mind, perhaps at some moment getting Mr. Belongo's information, because I can't answer that question, but I know, I personally know how I'm already going to vote, and it's not going to change my vote, so if you could do that one-on-one. So now, as housekeeping, it would be up to an individual, Board of Supervisor, if you feel that changed your vote.
Or do you need clarification?
Yeah, or more clarification. So is there anybody on the board? So this is perfect demonstration.
Since this has really streamlined this process so well today, I'll ask probation to answer that question.
For the purpose of demonstration, we would not normally do that. You would just be pulling it to take it out of consent. It would still be directed to the department head or the person, staff, just for demonstration, but because, Lance, if you don't mind, indulge us a little bit, you know, so.
Lance, please, Assistant Chief of Provision. The answer's pretty simple to Mr. Belongo's question. That is extended to juveniles also, it's just an internal thing. The contract is simply for the use of the equipment to do that, so it's absolutely available to juveniles.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any other, are we off script? Okay, so bringing it back to the board, is there, excuse me, I apologize, Zoom, is there anyone on Zoom in the public? Okay, great. So now I'll bring it back to the board. So now I'll bring it back to the board and obtain the motion.
So may.
Motion by Supervisor Finley. Second by Supervisor Grove. Supervisor Grove, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 2.6, Supervisor Morris. Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation designating November 2020 as National Veterans and Military Families Month, no fiscal impact. Supervisor Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we started this process, we always try to honor Veterans Day, which is next week, on the 11th, I believe, and started this process last year to honor the whole month of veterans and their families. We have a significant amount of veterans that live in this county and we like to pay tribute to them. So I pulled this item in so we could read the proclamation to give it a little bit more acknowledgement for veterans and Veterans Day and month and their families. So with that, I would like to proceed and read our proclamation. Whereas a large number of veterans reside in Trinity County at each Veterans Day, we come together to pay tribute to the men and women who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. Americans commemorate those who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation and families who support them. And whereas now each November, we give pause to the great contribution of both our veterans and military families in Trinity County. Whereas veterans make our county stronger by applying their military experience in their post-service lives, Trinity County is lucky to have many of the veterans employed within the county government and benefit upon their leadership and training. We are also fortunate to have veterans residing in our county, helping neighbors and communities in need and serving whenever and wherever it is necessary. Whereas military families too have a special duty to their country. Military spouses, for example, stand in full support of their service members, often putting a career on hold to move to another installation or juggle life's complexities mid-employment. From settling their children in a new school to helping their service member, parents navigate care when their loved one is far from home, military families never stop giving. And whereas as a county, while we should give our thanks, recognition and support to our veterans and military families year-round, it is especially vital to do so during National Veterans and Military Families each November. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim November as a National Veterans and Military Families Month, the Board encourages all communities throughout the county to acknowledge and honor the service, sacrifice and contributions of veterans and military families for what they have done and what they will do every day to support our great nation.
Thank you. With that, I would move to approve.
Second.
Yes, okay. Well, I'm going to open it to the public if there was any comments.
My apologies.
Madam Chair. It's all right. Doing everything different.
Yeah.
So is there anybody on Zoom that would like to chime in on behalf of the veterans? So if not, we bring it back to the board and I believe there's a motion.
Sorry, jumped ahead.
I had a second.
Yes, I thought you had a question. I'm sure.
Motion by Supervisor Morris and second by Supervisor Grove. Supervisor Grove, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a quick comment for CAO Coons. I meant to, I apologize before I vote went down. Did I say Supervisor Coons?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's close.
I wonder who you met. CAO Coons, you know, perhaps at our next meeting, we could have our new veterans rep give the board an update. We hadn't had an update on veteran services in quite a while. And, you know, Patrick was pretty regular, appearing before our board with various updates, so it might be given Veterans Month.
And an update on our certifications.
Yeah, right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Item 2.7, Supervisor Morris, clerk of the board, appoint Kent Collard to the Trinity County Resource Conservation District to serve a two-year term commencing on November 30th, 2020 and expiring on December 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pulled this just for some clarification. We have the general manager here from RCD, Kelly Sheen, and just a term, the term of two to four years, there needs to be a little clarification, so I wanted to pull it on Mr. Sheen's behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Morris. Thank you, Madam Chair and the board for just allowing me to make this clarification. It is our understanding that when our board seat that was vacated, I believe in our June Board of Directors meeting by Morgan Rourke stepped down, the board, that seat that we were trying to fill was actually, as of December 1st this year, would be a four-year term, commencing then and then through November 30th. So that clarification, as well as we would, the board directors have asked also that Kent could actually be accepted in this appointment for actually the beginning this month for our board meeting, which would be on November 18th. And also with a clarification, there may have been some confusion as we also had at our October 21st meeting, a midterm resignation, that we will also be providing a specific recommendation for filling as of the November 18th meeting as well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Yes.
I just would like to explain, this was a misunderstanding on my part. I thought this was a normal filling. It's just a misunderstanding on my part.
Thank you. So are there any, are there any questions from the supervisors? Any other questions?
So Kelly, are you asking us that we just back the date up to November 18th versus November 30th for their term to start?
Yeah, as of effective immediately or for the 18th, so that Kent can, Mr. Clark can actually attend and be a voting member of our Board of Directors meeting for the 18th of November.
So if the supervisor makes a motion to include the language of effective as of this passing, then we can add that language. Did I, well, I'll see if there's any public comment. I won't make it. Is there any other questions? Going to open it to the public? Is there any public here that want to weigh in? Saying none, going to bring it back to the Board of Supervisors.
I move to pass 2.7, effective immediately for Kent Collard's position on the RCD board.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Morris and a second by Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye. Thank you.
So we're going to go move right in if this Board of Supervisors ready to go forward with our planning and zoning public hearings. I'm not there with those things forward, we're zoning a little bit behind and I see that there's, everybody is hanging out. Okay. 10 o'clock, public hearings at 10:49. Planning and zoning, Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider introducing the waiving and the reading of it and enacting an ordinance, amending Trinity County zoning ordinance, ordinance number 315 by rezoning APN 0140300600 from Riverview Drive's specific unit development, SUD, district to the Hayfork Transition Specific Unit Development, SUD Zone District Planning File P 2001. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. I'm Lisa Lozier, I'm the Deputy Director of Planning, and I will be presenting Agenda Item 3.1 for you today. This project site is located at 541 Riverview Road, and that is in the community of Hayfork. It is on approximately nine acre parcel south and to the west of Hayfork Creek. So the proposed Hayfork Transition Specific Unit Development is a mouthful. This zone district is intended to reclaim and clean up an approximately nine acre parcel to facilitate the development of an educational, recreational and agricultural property for the benefit of the citizens of Hayfork and for Trinity County. The proposed SUD ordinance incorporates a written set of guidelines and standards and permitted uses, including permitted uses designed to develop in four phases. Also includes development standards and conditions. So for the four phases, Phase 1 would include property cleanup and fencing, a well for agricultural purposes, development of community agricultural area for vegetable garden, community orchard and similar agricultural uses, 400-foot shelter for tools and agricultural equipment and parking area associated with those uses. Phase 2 would be the installation of fire-safe native plants and drought-tolerant landscaping throughout the remainder of the property site, walking paths, including benches, public tables and art for the general public to enjoy, two greenhouse structures not to exceed 3,000 square feet, that's total, 400-square-foot vegetable cooling room, processing shed, a public restroom and parking area to support those uses. Phase 3 would include a caretaker's residence. And finally, Phase 4 would be a 2,800-square-foot structure, which 1,600 square feet of that would be for a multipurpose hall to be used for classes, communities and workshops. And the remainder of the structure would basically support the administrative function of the Hayfork Transition 501 C3. So this project is served by Trinity County Waterworks District 1 and Trinity Public Utilities District. And this project was presented to the Planning Commission at the regular Planning Commission meeting on October 8, 2020. The Planning Commission adopted Resolution 2020-12 recommending approval of this project to the Board of Supervisors. And staff's recommendation is to find the project exempt from California Quality Act, CEQA, by the common sense exemption 15061B3, which applies only to projects where it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment. And introduce, waive the reading of and adopt an amendment to the zoning code of the County of Trinity, identify the zone amendment P-20-01 to rezone Assessor's Parcel 014-030-0600 from the Riverview Drive Specific Unit Development to the Hayfork Transition Specific Unit Development, and that is Planning File P-20-01. That concludes my presentation. I would be glad to answer questions, and the applicant for the project is also here to answer your questions.
Are there any questions from the supervisors? No?
No questions.
Thank you for, yes?
Just a statement, in future staff packages to us, could you include the minutes, the audio minutes of the planning session?
Yes.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
So I don't see any questions from the Board of Supervisors. So the applicant, would you like to speak on his behalf of this project in any way?
I don't know if I need to.
You don't, you don't need to, I just was giving you the opportunity.
You will?
I know a lot of work from the community and from individuals and a lot of volunteers have done amazing work trying to clean up the property, so I appreciate that. I don't remember if I do public comment, no. So I'm going to bring it back to the board and Supervisor Finley.
Public.
Or public?
Public comment. I have received some public comment from Sally Aldinger. She is extremely in favor of this. I can read the whole thing, but the gist of it is she owns an associated property, she's an adjacent landowner, and she feels that the property was a blighted property and is now being cleaned up, and she has written letters in favor of this and fully supports Christina in all of these efforts.
Thank you. So any other public comment?
I'm Peterson, Newarkville. I worked with Sally Aldinger in 2014 on the Hayfork Community Plan Update, created a series of maps. This project is perfectly in sync with those proposed zoning updates and community objectives stated in that plan update. The Hayfork Transition Group is already leveraging local partnerships to enhance and restore habitat to design those elements. I think it's a really great opportunity for the community, both recreationally and as an educational opportunity for children and wildlife habitat. This project is a win-win for everybody, so I really urge the board to vote unanimously in favor of the rezon.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom? Adrian Keyes? Mr. Keyes?
Hello, this is Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. I just want really to reiterate a lot of what Regis said. I think this is a fantastic project. It fits in really well with the Hayfork Community Plan, and it's the type of like reinvigoration program that offers a lot of opportunities to our community that I think we should really support, and I'd really like to see this go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keyes. Any additional? Veronica Kelly Albi? Ms. Albi?
Hi, Veronica Kelly Albi, Douglas City. I just wanted to applaud everybody that is part of this project. It looks like such a great opportunity to continue to build and enhance partnerships in Hayfork and provide additional recreational outlet for everybody there. So I just wanted to say, I think this is a great project and it looks like it fits well within that area, and I just wanted to say applaud the people that are part of this. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else waiting on Zoom, so I'm going to bring it back to the board.
I would like to make a comment regarding this item. I would like to see this move forward. I urge each board member to vote aye on this item. It has strong support throughout District 5 and especially Hayfork and Supervisor Chadwick's District, District 3. It's really exciting and I really thank, thank you for doing this. It's really incredible. Thank you.
That's a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
I just would like to comment before the vote that echo Supervisor Finley's comments, a great showing of community involvement, so congratulations to all involved. Given that we passed it.
Motion by Supervisor Finley, second by Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Brown, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Happy yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we move to the next item, can we get a clarification, I think it was on 2.7, Supervisor Morris made the motion to appoint effective immediately, but it wasn't clear, it was whether they named the term four years, clarification?
I believe it was for four years, which is their term, that was my understanding, that's how I voted.
Yeah.
It may not be, but thank you for checking.
Yeah, so we're just checking to make sure that you're, okay.
All supervisors agreed that's what they believed they were voting on, four years.
Okay, thank you, we'll put that in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Moving on, item 3.2, continued from October 20, 2020, conduct a public hearing to consider introducing the waiving and reading of the Enacting an Ordinance Amending Trinity County Code Section 1717 to include uses permitted by right and to amend uses permitted without use permit. Unknown fiscal impact. Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Lisa Lozier, Deputy Director of Planning, I'll be presenting Agenda Item 3.2. As mentioned, this item was continued from the October 20, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting. What this is, is simply an amendment to Chapter 17, it's 17.17, the specific section or chapter is duplex residential or R2 district. And what the issue is with this particular district is in 2014, an ordinance was brought before the board with the intent of incorporating requirements of the Federal Fair Housing Act and the California Fair Employment and Housing Act. And as a part of going through that ordinance, there was some language, you know, well throughout the ordinance, there was various bits of language that were struck and various bits that were added. And what happened is for this particular section for the R2, all of the permitted uses were struck from that ordinance. And, you know, the only uses that were permitted, or you know, that you could actually look to, you know, to decide what you could do with that district, was listed in 17.17.020, which are all uses permitted once a use permitted is issued. So...
I don't want to interrupt you, but I want a clarification. You said all were struck, were they purposely disqualified, or were they accidentally omitted?
Staff believes that they were accidentally omitted.
Thank you, that's an important point.
Yes, yes it is. And to follow up with that, you know, typically any zone district is going to include uses that are permitted by right. And in this particular case for the R2, the uses permitted by right were removed, and it was listed as a reserved section. So what staff is proposing in this is that there be some amendments to this particular zone district. And kind of how we got here is concerns for the public, you know, people that own property that is zoned R2, it creates kind of a difficulty for them to move forward and develop any kind of housing. If it's all, you know, everything that they want to do, they must secure a use permit to do it. So we took a look at the zone district, you know, verifying that the uses permitted were no longer within that district. So we're proposing that for an R2 zone district, which is kind of a lower density multifamily residential housing, that for 17.17.010, that it would be included, uses permitted, as two single-family structures and duplexes, we would propose that as an addition. And then in the following section, 17.17.020, which is uses permitted, subject to first securing a use permit in each case, Part A of that would read as follows, which would be single-family dwellings, triplex as a single structure, hospitals, rest homes, sanitariums, and clinics. And for Section A, items to be struck from that is two, single-family structures, condominiums. So those items would be struck from what is currently existing. So that's, that's what we're proposing, so...
Is there any questions, supervisors?
I figured there would be questions.
Yes, so is it my understanding this hasn't gone to the Planning Commission?
It has gone to the Planning Commission, it went to the Planning Commission, what date did we go to the Planning Commission? July 23, 2020, Planning Commission adopted Resolution 2020-07, directing the department staff to initiate zone amendment for Chapter 17.17 duplex residential or R2 district.
So they've reviewed all of the changes that you're...
That's correct, yes, we had a fairly robust discussion.
And what was the vote at that point?
The vote at that point was a unanimous vote, based on what we had originally proposed was to include triplexes in the, in the uses permitted, and that was discussed and found to be inappropriate by the Planning Commission, they chose to stay with two single-family residences and duplexes. And then the other item that was discussed is whether condominiums should be struck from Item 17.17.020, which is uses that are approved with a use permit. So that was the discussion.
All right, so just to be crystal clear, you're...
Yes.
That the, what you're presenting today is the exact...
Yes.
Recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Sorry to push that so hard.
Oh no, it's important.
Supervisor Morris? Sort of a quick clarification, obviously you're asking that two single-family structures and duplexes move into uses permitted. So I don't have the zoning in front of me, but what, was there a discussion about single-family homes? If I'm reading this correctly, the way it stands, single-family dwelling would need a use permit for R2. Was that at all discussed to go into uses permitted?
What the difference would be there is for the duplex district, you could have two single-family residences, so in effect you have two residences on the property, and you couldn't just build one and then get to the other one later, you know, they would have to come simultaneously.
Oh, okay.
And then with the single-family residential zone districts, that would be just one residence.
I see, okay, thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Finley? Opening it up to the public? Anything on Zoom? Ms. Veronica Alby's?
My apologies, I didn't realize my hand was up, it's down, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public, so I'm bringing it back to the board, but before I do, I want to tell you that I thought this was a great report, and I think that Supervisor Grove's idea of having the audio minutes is stellar, I think that's awesome, so I appreciate that you're going to help future boards with that, so...
Be glad to do it.
I entertain a motion? Salute.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Morris, second by Supervisor Finley. Supervisor Finley, how do you vote?
Oh, aye, sorry about that.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Grove?
I'm not saying no.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye, and Ms. Allen, I didn't see you come up, I would have called on you, were you there to talk on this matter?
I jumped up in bad timing, no, I just want a clarification, when we say the audio minutes, are, do we mean a copy of the written, the draft minutes, or the approved minutes from the Planning Commission? I don't know what audio minutes means.
And I respond to that, it's either any approved minutes, if they are approved, or a link to the audio from of the Planning Commission, so that the board can see what occurred.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, so...
Is that 401 vote, passing?
It passed, I just want to make sure, I didn't know if that was present, I apologize. So, moving on to reports and announcements, item 4.1, report from department heads. Anybody, Ms. Allen?
I'll back up, Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director, I just wanted to announce that there will be a special meeting held with Planning Commission on November 19 at 6:00 PM at the Trinity Performing Arts Center. That will be for our cannabis program environmental impact report. The stop report will be available on November 12 at our website, and it's going to be, yeah, a long, interesting meeting, I want to start getting word out that this is happening, and we're wrapping up the final EIR again for our commercial cannabis program.
Thank you, are those dates now posted on the county website and under the department?
They are not yet posted, there is going, we'll get those posted, and there will be legal notice in the paper in the Trinity Journal tomorrow.
I appreciate it, any other questions? Thank you. Are there any other department heads on the phone that wanted to report out or the Zoom?
Good morning, good morning, this is Liz Hamilton.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you Supervisor Morris for item 2.6, with National Veterans and Military Families Month, on behalf of our Veteran Services Officer, I'd like to say thank you for bringing this proclamation aboard, and we look forward to that report out. I would like to provide the board an update to our local assistance center, it's currently being staffed by our federal, state, and local partners at the Bruce Lake Community Hall. The hours are from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and that will be extended through November 10, and that includes the weekends as well. I want to draw your attention and the public's attention to our trinitycounty.org website, we have a lot of information being posted for the regarding debris cleanup, just the local assistance center, we're keeping that posted with all of our partners' information, so I just encourage folks to visit that as a hub for information. To date, we have been able to serve 135 individuals at the local assistance center, and we're grateful to have that engagement, and I will wait for further comments on debris to the urgency ordinance, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any questions, please? No?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Is there anyone else on Zoom wanting to give a department head report?
Does anybody else hear that draw? Okay, so we'll move on to report from County Administrative Officer, Dr. Kim.
I'll defer, because I have a report on 5.1, so I'll defer to that.
Okay. Report from members of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Brown?
I have no out-of-county travel and nothing new to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Grove?
I have no out-of-county travel, but I have two asks of the board. Number one, last time I asked to have the ordinance brought back, the cannabis ordinance brought back with the original wording put back into it, there was a miscommunication of what I meant. I meant for that to come back as an item, an action item, for us to discuss that, so I would request this board allow me to put that on the agenda. And so this was to repair the typographical error that we had when we, when we took stacking out and put that language out, and the intent that I would have is that I would clean this issue up until we can do the stacking ordinance. So that's an informed motion.
Second. We have a discussion on that. And just to, because we did have a problem with, and the language is to put back in one license, one parcel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your standard is...
With my second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Grove, a second by Supervisor Finley. Supervisor Finley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Thank you.
That's a three to vote, it passes.
Secondly, I've discussed this with C A O, and I would request this board, as you've heard today, since the, the end of the ad hoc committee that the cannabis program has ground down to a halt in movement forward, and we just are treading water and not doing that very well, I think that's, doesn't really necessarily reflect poorly on anybody, it's just that we've, in business terms, we've designed for failure in some aspects without proper vision. So I've asked C A O if he could put together a short-term plan, a midterm plan, and a long-term plan for the cannabis department, including stacking, who's going to write new ordinances, the cost for this, to have a fully functioning department, and I would like to see the board ask him to do that and bring that back before the end of the year, so this board can see what the direction we're going to take. So that is an informed motion also.
I would second that. I don't know if this is your intention, but I'd also like to see, because they're interlinked, both with environmental health and building, and so I think they need to be woven in to that discussion and plan, as I mentioned earlier, all three departments are going to be very busy in the next, like now.
Anything having to do to make that a full function in the cannabis department is my intention, to have that move forward so licenses can go out, environmental protection's can happen, neighbors can be, feel comfortable, the whole package.
So we're still in discussion, I'm going to insert that Kim just announced the CEQA D I R moving forward this month, and I believe that as the CEQA process, Margaret, you could please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that comes, I want to say married or hinged with an ordinance that should be presented to clean up some of the concerns that are before us, am I correct in understanding that?
So there will be an ordinance that accompanies the E I R that does articulate some of the litigations that were recommended as part of the E I R, but it's not a full cleanup, it's just taking what the E I R requires litigation and putting it into a ordinance.
So we're saying that because we don't know what parts it's cleaning up and not cleaning up, I think that this request needs to be after we see what this CEQA has, to have, to have it come before us, the next board meeting is the 17th, but we have a, the meeting at TICAD, if I got my dates right, the 19th, and another meeting on the 12th, if I heard Director Hunter, so that would put this agendaized item into December, I just want...
It's posted online on the 12th meeting. It's only on the 19th.
Right. The what?
The meeting is only on the 19th. On the 12th of November, it is posted online.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. Yeah. I didn't write down what the 12th was. That's good.
In a manner, maybe we do need to meet on the first Tuesday of December since it's moved. So you want to have a special meeting just on the.
Or whatever else I need to do, but.
May I?
Yeah. This is for discussion.
So I'm looking more at a global organizational. I'm not looking for, I mean, we need to have a decision on who's going to write new ordinances. Staff obviously doesn't have the potential. CAO needs to come up with a plan, whatever that may be. And this not is, is not dependent on what happens in the EIR. That's been taken care of. And to actually think that the EIR will be passed in one night, I think is really asking for something that I wouldn't give, I wouldn't bet on that. So that EIR before it comes to this board could easily be into January. I would consider it lucky for that EIR to make it here in December.
Yeah. My understanding it has to go, correct me again, before the Planning Commission, before it comes to the board.
Yes, it's going to the Planning Commission. That could easily, depending on what the new ordinance is.
So I understand that.
Two or three weeks. But we've purchased a building. How are we going to fill that building? How are we going to pay for the people in there? What do we need to have this, this program function properly? Like when you go in there, people answer your questions. And I mean, this is the number one that we've just kind of stalled out here, which I believe is true. We've stalled. And so coming up with a plan saying, we need 22,000 more people, or we need three more people, or we need computer systems, or whatever we need, I'm not wanting to get involved in fair or unfair enough. That's the CAO's job. So I would, I don't see a reason to delay. I think we should be working on that program right now. And of course, what happens in the EIR will adjust what staff individually will have to do, but it's still not a big picture issue in my opinion.
Okay. So you want to agendaize a global conversation about planning cannabis and environmental health? And that's what, I'm taking what you're saying and trying to condense it so I understand.
Well, and not just, I would like to have CAO bring us an outline of where we're going. And so if we need to raise another half a million dollars to make this function, then we have to figure out how to do that. If there's no way we can function this way, then we're going to have to redo what we're asking of people. I mean, we really have to sit down and have a plan, a direction. And I think the sooner, the better. I mean, it would be, it'd been wonderful to have that a year ago or, you know.
Three years ago, four years ago. Richard, have you been working on something like this?
I can have, I can have a plan very quickly.
Can you just report out on it at some point and then see if the supervisors wish to add to your plan or the direction of staff that's been moving forward?
Yes, I have, I have a, I have a plan, but it hinges on financing. So that's the, that would be the catalyst of how we move it forward. So, but there's also some ideas of that too. So I have no issue bringing forward a plan that does short-term, medium-term, and long-term out to four to five years. So that is something myself and staff has been discussing, more in a wish list type of discussion, because everything does hinge around finances. But we have priorities. And if that's our priority, then it's up to myself to make recommendations to the board to set those priorities, to where the funding goes. So yes, absolutely, I can bring that forward.
And let us know that as supervisors ask for the cost, and maybe we should look at how much we've spent on the past four or five years on these ordinances and staff and county council and outside staff and everyone else to get us to this point. I'm sure that, last time you brought it to my attention, it was about $500,000 to $600,000. And that was December of 16 or 17. And I was pretty disappointed with what we had. But I don't see a mandate to provide cannabis. I see a mandate to provide health and safety services. I don't think the state has given us a mandate to move forward with cannabis. That's why it kind of lingers. It's our choice to move forward with it or not. Whereas we have fire flood potential and we have no, do we have any general fund dollars going to OES? I don't think so.
No, we don't.
Right. But we have cannabis funds that we've been using and moving forward with this, instead of working on what we're really supposed to be providing for our constituents, which is health and safety services.
You kind of lost me in that, John, which is, I hope that's an agreement to move forward with the plan.
No. It's an agreement for CAO to move forward with presenting what he has been working on and what other staff has been working on. And specifically, we're here to provide health and safety services. I can see the state mandate that we provide cannabis services.
The, my district.
I assume we'd be using it for additional revenue.
My district would highly disagree with you that these ordinances aren't for health and safety.
Supervisor Morris? Thank you. Let's chat. Yes, you know, in terms of your global plan, we, you know, have some short-term needs of just getting some basic aspects of the program with those licenses going out. I would contend Supervisor Finley, that a part of the program indirectly has spent, offered $1.2 million to help build a new jail. I think that's some health and safety issues as a result of the cannabis program.
Which revenues come from?
Enforcement, which cannabis program has supported.
I appreciate this, this healthy discussion, but the, what we can do now is make a decision whether we're going to agendaize an item in the future. It's probably not appropriate to have that full discussion here. So I.
I'm just trying to get clarification on what we're bringing forward and how we're doing it, because is it a report out with Dr. Coons? Or I haven't heard. I'm still trying to whittle down what the agendaized item is, other than to ask the board to listen to a global explanation, short, medium, and long term, of what Dr. Coons wants to say. And I think that can be done in a report out. So are we in agreement that we're listening to a report out?
I'm looking for a formal plan.
So Mike, the direction I'm hearing is to agendaize an item and open forward a, a itemized list of how I see the cannabis program moving in a six-month, two-year, five-year, and extended. So I have no, I have no issues with providing that to the board.
Okay.
So, and to add to that, I would, I'd like a formal plan that would sit to where at six months, we can have the review and say, what goals have we hit? What goal haven't we? Do we need to change? And that would be the role of the board is to make sure the plan is moving forward.
Okay. So who's going to take that and put it in the motion? Who's in the second?
It's already, you're already in the motion.
Well, it was motion and not as that, but if you want to say that was it, that's fine. Just like you had, thought you had made your motion two weeks ago and then today had to modify it. So I just want to make sure.
Clearing the motion is that I'm requesting the board to support Dr. Coons in bringing forward a formal plan for our cannabis program, which would include all aspects related around that.
Second.
You got a second?
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacklin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
Thank you, Port.
Just looking, I think it's Supervisor Finley, your turn to report out.
Wow.
Yeah.
To follow that. No out-of-county travel. Everything in Southern Trinity is moving along. And I have to say that constituents have stepped up. Even according to FEMA, when I was there last Friday, there have been up to 30 to 40 people that have checked in with FEMA. And the county response has been incredible. To go down there and see the county representative doing what it's supposed to be doing in between Health and Human Services, planning, building and planning. It's, I have to thank Director Hamilton and CAO Coons. It's incredible to see the county stepping up. And I really do want to see more revenue poured into it in the future. I hope that the two board members that are here consider health and safety. Since we're going to only have more fires, we're probably going to have some floods, and we're going to have to recondition the national work on everything. It really should be a priority that we move forward with health and safety and move general funds into that, including law enforcement, DA, and OES. It's going to probably be pretty important.
Thank you.
Got it.
Supervisor Morris? No out-of-county travel. I would take on Supervisor Finley's staff has been working overtime on double duty, whether it's COVID, South County issues. It's going to get, in terms of the short term, the demand on them from COVID in building is going to increase. I do want to, it's great that we have the federal designation from FEMA. With that, we, Director Tippett informed us that, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, those folks who did lose their home will be eligible for a, I don't want to say cash out, but a bit of a chunk of money.
There's an additional funding that wasn't available the last time we came through with this.
For Helena, right.
And they're working through it. And I hate to say $10,000 to $40,000, but don't pin me down and don't ask them. Access my checking account, you know?
But every bit will help in terms of their rebuild or.
It's, it's really there.
Yes.
And a lot of people had their insurance lapse, and a lot of people are having, having problems. This is, this is an incredible outreach from the federal and state.
And I wanted to thank all our federal and state representatives who helped carry everyone's message to get that designation done, so. Thank you for your report. So we had the Calusa Glen Trinity CAP Board meeting. We have lost one of our members from the public sector, Sandy Bechtel, who has served as a volunteer in that position since 2007. That opens up a second position on our CAP Board. They did a tribute. It was really beautiful. Many people spoke on their relationship with Sandy. And I'm sure Supervisor Finley will say that the Hayfork District 5 and 3 has lost a warrior for the community. And so it's not normal, but I didn't know if you wanted to speak publicly about our loss in losing Sandy, or I can move on.
Sandy Bechtel was one of the first people that we met and had worked with when Jose and I first moved here. She, she also, she's just an incredible person. I'd get, I'd get crap from her because we'd be up looking at the cell tower and a ground squirrel would run by and I'd go, boy, cling. And she'd go, don't you dare go after that ground squirrel. It has every right to. Oh, I'm going, Sandy. She also had an incredible relationship with Supervisor Otto and Supervisor Reese. And she is sorely, sorely missed by Southern Trinity. She served on the Southern Trinity Clinic. What else did she serve on?
She's so many different things that I don't know how we, she was, she was an eagle packaged in a banny hen.
She would deliver phone books.
She was so little.
Phone books to Southern Trinity. Ew.
Yeah. It was amazing.
I miss her so much.
And it's really sad because with COVID, we can't do anything. But the Hayfork Parks and Rec has stepped up to the plate, and they will be doing a memorial bench at the park. And the community wants to honor her. And thank you for those words.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
So the Fire Chiefs meeting was last night, the first one in over two months. And Supervisor Morris and I were both there specifically to honor Andy Reiling, who is retired as of last night. And he has served as Lieutenant Battalion Commander of the CAL FIRE specifically in Trinity for 13 years, but his service to our community goes back 31 years. So we have two young men who Andy trained to fill his shoes. So looking forward to see that accomplishment. And I appreciate the effort and the kind words that you spoke last night there. I'm going to, I'm going to, with time, I'm going to let go of the rest of my report, but I have something special. The California State Association of Counties has honored one of our very own on this board supervisors, Supervisor Morris. I want to read the letter that CSAC has provided. Now normally this would be done at the California State Association of Counties, but because of COVID, it is limited. She would be one of a few recipients of the 58 counties to receive this award. And Trinity County appreciates this, so please endure while I read this. Dear Supervisor Morris, the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, would like to honor you with our prestigious Circle of Service Award.
Fantastic.
You, for your work on behalf of CSAC and California counties, this award is a way for CSAC to recognize county officials, staff, and other association affiliated members whose service to our association and membership has been substantially above and beyond the norm. During your tenure as a county supervisor, you have demonstrated versatility and vast knowledge on many issues while serving CSAC in a wide variety of important leadership capacities. Beyond representing Trinity County, on the CSAC Board of Directors, we appreciate your extensive leadership roles, including terms as the Association Treasurer. You were the Treasurer, sorry. Chair of the Government Finance Administrative Policy Committee, co-chair of the Women's Leadership Forum, that is a coveted, very fought-over position, and co-chair of the CSAC Cannabis Working Group. Supervisor Morris, you have been a strong voice for rural issues, bringing that voice regularly to Sacramento, and you will be greatly missed in your retirement. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted many of CSAC's functions this year, and we are in the process of determining how to best present awards to the recipients this year. Your award will be announced as part of the CSAC's 126th Annual Meeting, which will be held virtually. We will also be promoting each award recipient through our CSAC bulletin, social media channels, and local media outreach in your area. Thank you for your contribution to our association and California's 58 counties. CSAC's ongoing success is due in large part to individuals like you. Sincerely, Graham Knox, Executive Director. So thank you for representing. Thank you. Thank you. I, you know, was getting wind of such. I didn't know that you would.
It was Dr. Coons.
Oh, it's be announced here. So thank you. It's, it's a great organization. They have helped us, rural, small rural counties even, a lot of issues, especially most recently on the COVID issues, for some flexibility. As you've seen in the news, there's been some contention over that with small counties and large counties and how we can operate. So it's been a great experience, great joy, working with so many different people and trying to keep our small county voice up there. Because, you know, the large counties can, they think they have the show, though we love them. They pay a lot for us. But, so thank you very much. It's, it came as a great, complete surprise. So I'm trying not to get worked up here.
It came as a great complete surprise, so I'm trying not to get worked up here. I won't cry.
It's okay.
So, thank you.
Well, you earned it, and it's really nice when we have something to celebrate, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Supervisor Finley. Thank you, guys. County Matters, yes?
Since we have, I was wondering if we can move to 5.2, and then I can present 5.1 afterwards, because we do have our track of personnel and David.
Yes, absolutely. So, I will, I will go ahead and read that, and it will be done. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by a department, a member of the Board of Staff, or public may request that the items be heard out of order. And we just heard, so we're going to take item number 5.2 pursuant to Government Code Section 25304, point David Brady as District Attorney to fill the unexpired term of the Trinity County District Attorney expiring in December 2020. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a District Attorney at A Step is $14,138. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. This is Shelley Nelson, HR Director. I'd like to begin first. There is a correction I need to make to the requested action. And Madam Chair, if it's okay, I just read it the way it should be?
Yes, please.
That way we can edit it. So, pursuant to Government Code Section 25304, appoint David Brady as District Attorney to fill the unexpired term for Trinity County District Attorney through December 2022. Had it at the bottom, but somehow missed it at the top.
Thank you.
So, we had an unexpected vacancy for our Trinity County District Attorney, which occurred on August 14th. And a few days later, on the 18th, you, the Board, had appointed David Brady to serve as our interim District Attorney. We've taken some time and allowed County Council to do some research with the Attorney General Opinion Unit regarding legal definition of domicile for the purpose of position of District Attorney, as well as consideration of Mr. Brady's experience and his positive reviews. He is qualified for appointment of Trinity County District Attorney to fill the unexpired term through 2022. And Mr. Brady has also acknowledged that he would accept this appointment. So, it's staff's recommendation to appoint him.
So, I just want to make sure, because it says December 2020 on the, and you're saying December 2022.
2022.
So, that's an additional change from in to through and December 20 to 22. Okay? I just want to make sure.
Thank you for noting that.
I was actually going to ask you about it.
If I could briefly comment, but.
Is there any board questions for Shelley?
How is, how are we being presented this? Is it a resolution or just?
It is a recommendation to our board.
It's just avenue?
Well, it's going to require a motion and a vote.
Right, I understand.
But it does not require a resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Please, County Council, did you have additional information?
I just wanted to briefly comment. I did have an opportunity to talk with the Attorney General's Opinion Unit, which is the one that analyzes making determination of whether somebody would be qualified as domiciled or not. I wanted to just thank them for the time they took to walk me through the steps and point me in the right direction and allow us to have the resources to confirm that Mr. Brady does qualify as domiciled, and it's appropriate for his appointment at this time. I also want to say that, you know, the appointment of Mr. Brady comes after some very sad and hard times in the county based on the loss of District Attorney Daly. I will say I've had many conversations with Ms. Daly, who had expressed the utmost confidence in Mr. Brady. He was her mentor, and she spoke nothing but wonderful things about him, his quality of work, his ethics. And from what I've seen so far, she's 100% right on what she said. But I just wanted to add that in there because it's important to know that she would be very pleased with this appointment.
Thank you. Okay. Want to open it to any public comment? I don't see any, so I'll bring it back to the Board with the corrections through in '22 instead of '20 and '21. Enter your motion.
So moved.
Second.
That's as amended?
Yes, thank you.
Motion by Supervisor Morris, second by Supervisor Finley. Supervisor Finley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
And just so the Board and the public is aware, the swearing-in will take place at 3:00 today in the courthouse. Judge Haraford is going to be doing it.
Great.
If anyone would like to go in.
Judge Haraford, it will be at 3:00 p.m. in Department One. There may be a limit. How many people could, are there in that department?
I'm worried about for sure.
In the past, we've done it here, we can't.
I believe that.
It's already set up.
It's already set up, but yeah.
I don't know.
There is a reason for it.
Okay. I don't know what Mr. Brady wants. Did you want to address the board in any way or speak?
No.
Oh, no. Wise choice.
No. Thank you, though.
And thank you.
Okay, we're going to jump back up to 5.1. Receive an update from County Administrative Officer Richard Coons on the CARES Act funding received by Sidney County and other COVID-19-related funding. No fiscal impact.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, there is part of this presentation I will have to recuse at, and that would be part of where we're going to give CARES money going to businesses that are signed up. So, I, CIO will give me a nod and say, okay, this is the part you need to leave.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I saw Suzy Cockings is on, and so when we are done with this, I'm going to jump back to reports because she was not available with her schedule. There was a conflict, and I do believe she wants to address the board, so.
Yeah, she's actually part of this presentation.
Okay.
The second part of the presentation, she'll be referring to this CBG and the grants and those.
Okay, so we don't have to do it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have.
That's okay. That's fine. Are we okay? Can we proceed?
Just one minute here. Sorry, Dr. Boon. We're patient.
All right. Sorry, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I believe it was Supervisor Morris asked me to bring this back a couple weeks ago. The Board conferred that we discussed the funding that is provided through the CARES Act, which is funding to help control and contain the coronavirus and costs associated with those that are unanticipated in our yearly budget projections. So, what we have on the Board right now is what was allocated to Trinity County, which was $1,381,344. These funds are used or contingency compliance with the state orders and guidance issued through the COVID-19. Each month, I do certify that we're using this money and extending it correctly, which Supervisor Morris and I were the weekend at to make sure that it was certification. Because it's due on the first of every month, and this month, the first fell on a Sunday, so there was some concern that it wasn't going to get in, but it was submitted by staff, as always. They're only to be used for unbudgeted costs that occurred from March of 2020 through December of 2020, and all funds must be spent. We can't encumber these funds for a rainy day. So, what's the next slide? I don't know if I'm going in the right order. No fund out, so I put this one. Within the funding, we've been to graph to see how much we're spending on county issues and what is going to be available to the public. So, as I go down, as you see, we've spent $83,998 for budget for personnel services and other costs related to our personnel with the COVID-19 testing and track tracing, Improved technology capability, and that will include our turning this into a full-functioning Zoom room, so we won't have these technical difficulties that we're having, because we do anticipate that this is going to be the new norm for the next 18 to 24 months. We're also using it to purchase laptops for staff, because we have several staff that do work from home now and telecommute. And we also have money set aside to purchase, since I'm not a computer person, things to assist our IT department in extending our pipeline and assistance for those that are working offsite. Payroll for public health and public safety is $464,800. Eight hundred, is that eight? My glasses on. That's 873, and that includes the overtime for jail staff, law enforcement, public health, those employees that are on the front lines dealing with the COVID. Personal protection equipment, $1,138. Public health expenses directly related are $106,874. I'm going to skip this one, and workers' compensation, because we've had so much overtime. It does affect our workers' comp, which is $43,262. And this is the part that will probably ask Supervisor Groves to recuse himself, but not yet. This is what I'm going to ask of the Board, and then you can ask for us. We have $400,000 that we have set aside for those organizations. I thought you were clearing your throat like you wanted to meet it.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. We've set aside $400,000 of the $1.3 million to hopefully assist our local businesses that have participated in the COVID compliance. They've got on our website, they've filled out the certificate, receiver's certificate. And currently, we have 234 businesses, with approximately 20 of those either being in a county or two locations. So, between 200 and 210 businesses that have applied and participated. And what we're looking at with this is they've all had to purchase masks. Spoke to one person that does inspections, and he said he has had to go all over the place just to get rubber gloves. He goes to 15 a day, 15 per day, little booties, because he goes into people's houses. We know the stores and retail establishments that have put up the plexiglass barriers. So, all of them have had costs associated with this that are mandated by the state. So, what we're trying to do is help them in some way with those costs. So, what we have is $40,000. And when we get to discussion portion, that's where we'll decide. We can do 100 up to 400,000, and then the Board can decide what they choose to. So, I'll go ahead and just do some of the, I got the next slide. Just associated funding that's come in that I can go over, and then we'll wrap it up with the decision on. Okay, and as you see up on the screen, I have associated funds. So, we have some realignment backfill of nearly $600,000, and those came into four line, foreign line departments, which is 127 for public health, 310,000 for human services, 107 for behavioral health, and 52,000 for public safety. We've got some public health funds of 1, I'm sorry, 2.5 million, which will be for 2020 to 2023. Those are for infectious disease prevention and control, enhanced flu grant, I'm not sure what that is, but maybe not going to enhance our proper flu vaccination and availability. A COVID-19 emergency response grant, HPP supplemental funding, I'm not even trying to say that word, and laboratory capacity, epidermonology, I guess. It's okay. And then crisis COA funding. And we have our Department of Transportation's for transit fees, which have been $348,000 for the next 2020 to 2022. As of 9/25, transit is at approximately $30,000 expenses eligible under this grant. And these funds can be used to provide reimbursement for expenditures and backfill loss of revenues through 2022. As you know, when this first came out, we shut down our transit from Humboldt County to Shasta County. So, we did leave some revenues on that, so that can backfill that. So, we have to answer your questions prior to, and then we can get into discussion, so Supervisor Groves can participate in discussion portion if he'd like.
Before you leave, did you have any questions? No. Okay. Supervisor Brown, did you have?
I don't know.
On this portion?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just have a clarification. So, this, I think we started out here with a 1 point, almost 1.4, then we get down to another almost 600,000. Is that extra 600 part of your?
This is, this is outside the CARES Act.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
This is just directly rated, just to the counties where the CARES Act, we're able to pass some of this money on to the general public.
I see. Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Morris. We'll let you know when you're ready. And then I have another question. And this is separate than the money Suzy has been working in.
Correct. Yes. She'll do the presentation for that. Yeah. So, what we've done is we've set aside $400,000. We're trying to put as much as we could towards the community for the efforts they put into the game. We've always said they do the heavy lifting and all this. We set the regulations are the ones that have to follow those regulations. So, where most counties have set aside 10, 15%, we tried to really do the best we could. You can see, I think we've reached almost 30% of what we've been allocated to us. So, our original hope was around $2,000 per business. And we can come pretty close to that. That's what if we save $400,000 and we have 210, it's going to be, you know, 1,900 and some change. So, my ask of the Board is that we use the entire $400,000. But again, I'll take direction from the Board, but my ask is that we use the entire $400,000 to assist these businesses. We have to spend the money. As I said, we can't encumber it. So, we could say, well, we're concerned that we might have some more overtime, so we can put $400,000 aside. But then if we have other associated costs that don't fall in this, then we would end up sending the money back. So, this is one of those times that, you know, I don't believe in spending it because it's allocated, but I think we can do a good service and show our community that we appreciate all the hard work they've put into this, too.
So, did you have specific figures?
Well, like I said, that $40,000, if we have 210, let me do the quick math real quick. If we had $4,000 divided by, say, 210, it's $1,904. But I hesitate to say, let's give each $1,904, because we have to go through and balance. It might be 210, it might be 205, it might be... So, if we set, if the Board says, yes, $400,000 divided by the number of businesses that received their certificate on November 1st, then we can divide that up, and it's going to come real close to $2,000 per business. 30% of what we've been allocated to us. So our original hope was around $2,000 per business. And we can come pretty close to that. That's what if we save $400,000 and we have 210, it's going to be 1,900 and some change. So my ask of the board is that we use the entire $400,000. But again, I'll take direction from the board, but my ask is that we use the entire $400,000 to assist these businesses. We have to spend the money. As I said, we can't encumber it. So we could say, well, we're concerned that we might have some more overtime, so we can put $400,000 aside. But then if we have other associated costs that don't fall in this, then we would end up sending the money back. So this is one of those times that, you know, I don't believe in spending it because it's allocated, but I think we can do a good service and show our community that we appreciate all the hard work they've put into this too.
So did you have specific figures?
Well, actually, $400,000 if we have 210. Let me do a quick math real quick. If we had 40,000 divided by, say, 210, it's $1,904. But I hesitate to say, let's give each $1,904, because we have to go through and balance. It might be 210, it might be 205, it might be. So if we set, if the board says, yes, $400,000 divided by the number of businesses that received their certificate on November 1st, then we can divide that up, and it's going to come real close to $2,000 per business.
Any questions from the board?
No. I appreciate it.
Okay. So permit an motion on that.
Yeah. Margaret, is there anything you want to weigh in, or counsel us before we go in further?
No, I think you're good to go.
And I have a question more out of curiosity than anything else. Is there any anticipation of future funding in this realm?
Nothing I've heard of recently, but as you said, this is for up to 2020, and we are, all counties will expend this, so it would not surprise me later on in the year as counties are turning their receipts and they're 100% expended long before the end of the year.
So there's a good chance that if a business, for whatever reason, didn't apply this time, that potentially if there is money next time, they would be in a different realm?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Once they went through that COVID.
Once they went through the requirements, yeah, of course. So, all right. I just, like I said, that was more for curiosity. Open into the public? Seeing no comments? Anybody on Zoom?
I would move to approve. Thank you. I mean, you know, my mantra about our small businesses over this course of COVID and helping to keep them alive throughout the county. So thank you for thinking of them and using this money to help offset some of their costs.
So that's a motion to approve the expenditure of the 400,000 divided by the specific number, I think it was 210. Yes. I just want to make sure we all.
Thank you. Yes.
That was my motion. Okay. For a second.
I'll go ahead and second.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Motion by Supervisor Morris. Second by Supervisor Fenley. Supervisor Fenley, how are you?
Hi.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Supervisor Morris.
Hi.
Supervisor Brown.
Hi.
Supervisor Chadler.
Hi.
Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, would you mind?
Yeah.
Supervisor Groves, thank you, Darryl.
And then the second half. Do we need to vote on that? To bring him back in?
To bring him back? He's going to make the motion.
Bring it? No.
And then the second half presentation will be by Ms. Copings, who is online, I believe, right now.
Welcome, Susie.
I'm going to say good afternoon. I was starting with good morning just an hour ago, so good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you for that reminder.
I want to take a couple minutes to talk about grants, and I'm going to lead off with and follow Dr. Kins with CARES Act funding. I'm not sure if all of you know that the county administrative office received separately from what Dr. Kins was mentioning, $26,000, a little bit more than that, in funding for the homeless population trying to.
Susie, I'm sorry, we're getting so much feedback. Hold on a second. Can we adjust the mic or something? It's hard to understand, dude.
To volume down.
Okay. Can you do an auto check? I'm sorry. Can you check your auto? Go ahead and just talk.
Me?
Yeah. Let, why, just.
Hello, everybody.
Is that, we're still getting a lot.
Is that helping?
Is that good, Dan?
Try it now, please.
Try it again.
Good morning, everybody.
That's, there we go. Sorry about that. Appreciate your patience.
No, no, don't worry. I can look at you. Anyway, the county has $26,000 in CARES Act funding for our homeless population, trying to, you know, purchase sanitary needs, PPE, things like that as it relates to homelessness. We have executed a memorandum of understanding with the Human Response Network to facilitate some of those costs. We've spent a minimal amount of money with regard to that, because we don't have the staffing either between HRN and the county to draw out new apartments. So I support at the end of this year to change that. More to come on that later this month. With respect to CARES Act and funding for small businesses, you guys have heard me mention community development block grant funding, CDVG funding. We have submitted an application for a little over $200,000 to the state. It's currently in the review process. That would be for micro enterprise business grants. Those are small business grants. Hopefully that gets approved. I'm not doing any special conditions work with the state right now, so that's a positive sign. As well, I am visiting this, and Supervisor Morris got in with me on a call yesterday with the state about the small business loan program, which is a process. And I have, we're submitting that final life application in the next two weeks, waiting for our partner agency, which is the Superior Health and Economic Development Department to just work on their end to help that application. I will let you know that CDVG staff did tell us yesterday that they are a minimum of 90 days out on contract. So even the school loan grant application is spring tomorrow. We're looking at January or February, so far as we would receive a contract, you know, after that to extend the fund. So a very delayed process for sure. Also within CDVG, we received approval last week for a grant application that I submitted in July, $150,000 for this in basis. We received an approval letter for the Trinity Center fire apparatus structure. That project is moving forward. The CDVG funding associated with that is a little over $208,000 on all program income We are going to be inputting three other program income applications. They are in various stages within the CDVG electronic system. Again, contracts are 90 days out after approval, and it goes through about 13 review steps. And each one of those steps is typically, Dr. Kins and I call it, that we have to jump through. Some of those who are requiring documentation, what they call state objectives, and that's around fair housing activities and disaster resiliency planning that we have not done in the last 24 months. So look for future efforts from me to apply for planning funding, where we can update some of those documents so that we continue to be eligible for future CDVG funding, which amounts to about $3.5 million a year in grant applications, and is also necessary for us to spend down our on-hand program income. So these things we have to do, and we'll go back. With respect to disasters, there will be three opportunities for funding as it relates to recent fires in the county. We'll have the community development block grant, disaster recovery opportunity, the hazard mitigation grant program opportunity, and then there's FEMA funding that will also happen, all three because we declared a disaster related to the fires of Trinity. So all three of those will be on my plate as soon as those funding notices come out. With respect to HERT, I am working with our special districts across the county on HERT capital funding, which is funding that doesn't come out very often, it's not competitive, it's allocation based. Each one of our special districts will receive $177,963 for projects that they relate to capital outlay. The county has $400,000 that we can use in the special districts or projects of our own, again, capital outlay. So we're going to be leveraging and creating funds to make bigger projects happen in all of those districts. Those applications are not due until January of 20, excuse me, December 2021. However, we're working on them now to get them in and get the funding in covered, so we can hope on the backside of the planning for each of them. Recently, we received Proposition 64 funding in the amount of $1 million that went to the sheriff's office for public health and safety. The programs they're going to be operating is in partnership with the Office of Education, and it's called the CARES Program, which stands for Coordinated Active Response to Insurance and Safety. It's a pretty big justice grant, and there's valuation efforts and a lot of partnership that's going to be had through that grant opportunity. Really exciting for that. Opportunities on the horizon in the new hazard grants that I'll be working on in the PI applications to wrap up. We have a local early action planning grant that is due in January. I will be working with planning staff to determine what our needs are. However, number one on my radar is updating our hazard mitigation plan, which is about five years old. State wants those updated every 24 months, if I'm understanding, so maybe applying for that leap spending for planning to hire a consultant, updating our application. And that's it for me.
Any questions from the board, Ms. Susie? I do, but I'll start any other board member if they want to go first.
No questions. Oh, my God.
So Ms. Morris. Okay. I couldn't tell if he had his hand open. You're good. Okay. Hi, Susie. Thank you for that great recap. And so some of these questions I've asked, you know, months ago or weeks ago, so indulge me if I'm, since I'm asking them, I'll get, again, just to get some clarification. So when we started this whole COVID deal and back in March and April, we had looked at some existing CDVG funds in-house that we want needed approval to roll out at the time under a business loan situation for our small businesses. Somewhere, maybe June, we got approval, if I remember correctly, to use that funding, which is separate than the 200,000 CARES Act that we also received. Do I have that correct?
So July 7, I came to the board to talk about multiple CDVG opportunities with respect to funding. One of those requested items was the use of $100,000 in PI funding to pair up or leverage with 100, I think it was 101,000 in CDVG micro enterprise grant funding. So we put those two together to make a $200,000 grant funded program for micro enterprises. Again, that application was submitted in September. It's going through review process. Then in early September came out the economic development side of things, where I put in an application for small business loan program. That one could not be granted, and it's substantially more funding available as well, up to $500,000 loans, really low interest, long term, low payments, $35,000 to $70,000 each. So those could exist as if bigger businesses then apply employees, so, you know, 20 or 20. But that one is the one that we're having to jump through multiple hoops, because there's what they call the threshold period, which is federal overlays and state objectives that are for things that should have been done in the last 24 months that we haven't done as a county. And those relate to things like hazard mitigation plans, disaster resilience, and fair house. Most jurisdictions have that coming in already, which here most of that. In what way, shape, or form, we are not that fortunate, so we have to deal with on our own, which is why our call yesterday with the state was so important.
Thank you. And so that original money, short of not the larger pot of money that you just applied for, is there any part of that money that we currently are sitting on internally here that we can really start rolling out to our businesses? Or is that still part of the review process? Because as I've mentioned, you know, a few times, we see other jurisdictions rolling that money out, and I worry about helping to keep our small businesses surviving as we head into winter.
Yeah. So Trinity County, Charlotte County, and the county that I'm working on with respect to CARES Act funding and small business loans or grant programs. Many different jurisdictions are using different pots of money. Some of them are actually using that allocation that Richard spoke about earlier to the county, their CARES Act allocation for business assistance or grants or loans for small businesses. So that's, that was, in my opinion, probably a good idea for some of the smaller counties because they didn't have CDVG funds, and didn't have a high enough number of COVID cases, but obviously businesses were impacted. So that's how some of those are expending those funds. We do have a rather significant pot of program income that we're sitting on. Unfortunately, you have to go to the state to make sure you complete their online application and you're meeting state objectives and the national objectives for extending those funds, because they are directly tied and linked to momentum households. And if we, if we attempt to spend that money outside of that contract, we would then be paying state that for many that we already are. So we have to wait till they review the process that I submitted electronically and then get us a contract back, and they're realized that at a, you know, 90-day delay.
Right.
Yeah. And if, if you heard the state rep yesterday, they have ridiculous stuff with, it's being felt all over the whole entire state.
Right.
And again, different jurisdictions are using different pots of money to make their CARES Act.
Okay. Thank you. I do not see any additional questions, Susie. Thank you. Those are very well presented, and I don't know how you keep all those things, and you just, it's like plethora, and you just can tap into any of them. So thank you. Appreciate you.
My pleasure. My pleasure. And I'll be back to the board with disaster recovery grant needs, as well as some MOUs for PI funding as we move forward, and then leap funding closer to the month of January. So if you're not done with me, just be fine with the next month.
Thank you again.
My pleasure. Have a great day.
Dr. Kins, was there anything you wanted?
That would conclude, unless you have any more questions. That would conclude our grand presentation.
No. I appreciate the really nice black and white layout of where everything's going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So 5.3 was pulled, and so we have two subsequent, and we'll go ahead and read subsequent one. Addendum language. An addendum also. Yeah. Why not? Can you look for that?
I'm going to subsequent. Talk about something to anybody.
I'm only saying, Supervisor Brown, do you have the addendum? Go ahead, do it.
For subsequent one?
Yeah, addendum. Oh, I found it. A lot of extra paperwork this morning. I apologize. Health and Human Services, introducing, waiving the reading of an enact, an urgency ordinance establishing regulations for the debris removal by property owners from properties damaged by the 2020 August complex fire in Trinity County, no physical impact. Liz?
Good morning. Thank you, chairman, members of the board. Thank you for taking this addendum on as it is time sensitive. So this item is, really speaks towards our phase two of the debris removal. This ordinance would allow us to engage with the property owners that lost their homes or outbuildings for the purpose of cleaning up and debris removal with our state partners. So you'll see within the attachments, in addition to the urgency ordinance, is the county right of entry template that's been approved by the state for all the counties that are going through this very similar process. And then the opt-out waiver for individuals that maybe do not want to engage with Cal Recycle or equivalent. The state is still in bidding process for the cleanup crew, so we don't have someone assigned as of this date. We do know that phase two cleanup will begin approximately December 1st, so the right of entry forms will be required to be turned in before and not later than December 15th. So with the board's approval on this today, which I'm hopeful and optimistic for, our staff at the local assistance center will begin engaging with the folks that are coming in there, passing out the right of entry form. It's a lengthy process, as you are familiar, and we need to get going on that right away.
Are there any questions from the board, Supervisor?
The right of entry form, can that be made so it's fill outable online?
The write of entry form, can that be made so it's fill outable online or I don't know if it requires a few things?
You know, that's a good question and we can explore that, see if there are permissions.
Even though most people might not have internet access that are fully these happen, they probably are going to have to sit down there with you individually and go through them.
Correct. And we will require a wet signature on these items.
Okay, well, they can fill it out and we'll get in. Regarding the opt-out waiver, just to, are you making clear to everybody, I haven't read the opt-out waiver, that they are still responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, for cleaning up their property per California state environmental standards if they opt out?
Correct. And that will include permits and working directly with environmental health in solid ways.
Perfect. So you're, it's, it's not just cleaning up your property and making sure that it's up to environmental standards, but it's getting the correct permits from the county to do that and everything else.
Correct.
And what's the intention of the county with the, with going onto people's property and if there's any dwellings left or cannabis regarding illegal activity?
I would have to defer to Kristi Anderson, Environmental Health Director, on the specifics of that for properties that are not cleaned up. Similarly to past events, you know, there's an abatement process and go through those steps, what I would like to defer to her expertise on.
Along with you, I would encourage people to take advantage, constituents to take advantage of this. It's extremely important. I went through with constituents, the few that lost, lost homes with the blue fire in close mountain Trinity Heights.
Correct. And we have approximately 240 properties.
Right.
So this is a significant lift.
It, it is significant. So please, if the public would move forward with this, we always appreciate it, your neighbors, everyone.
So no additional question from the board, I'll look to the public.
I do, Supervisor Chadwick, I do have one thing in my notes that I forgot to mention. I would like to include within this ask that either the Environmental Health Director or the OES Director be able to sign as the authorized representative on the RLE.
So I want to make sure I got this clear, either or?
Either or.
Okay, thank you. So I will open it to the public now. Any comments? Anybody on Zoom?
Oh, I haven't called it.
Sorry, Tom. I didn't see you move.
I'll make it quick. This program worked pretty good post-Holena fire in Junction City three years ago. It's really important to, I think, put some resources into immediate outreach so that these hazardous materials can get cleaned up before the rains, trying to keep out in creeks and rivers. A lot of that was able to happen on the Holena fire and I think was tremendous environmental benefit. Excellent.
Thank you.
I have a question for county council regarding who would be the best signature environmental help. She's got a badge. Does that help?
It's sort of the board's determination that it doesn't make a difference from a badge perspective.
I believe that the request was either one of them, either or. So if Kristi's been very busy and I know Emma too, so I think we authorize both of them, then they have who's available. I think that was, that's why I asked the request. Am I wrong on that or?
You're correct.
Okay. So anybody on the line?
Yes, there's Liam Gogan.
Yes, how are you? I'm sorry that I'm a little late. I have my, I have, since Susie Coons gave her presentation, I'm not too late to ask a question or two about that. She mentioned a very large grant to help the schools and I was wondering what.
He's on the last item.
Is there a blueprint on how they're going to spend this money at the schools? Do they go to, or promise they go to all the schools? How are they dispersed to the schools? Does she know yet? And I think this is very important that the other kids of our county right now are going to be deligous of our county soon. So I would, we're interested in this situation. Maybe Susie has left.
Yes. Susie's left. She hasn't been up here.
This is still there, if she can answer that. If I'm probably able to relate.
So as a, as a courtesy, I went ahead and allowed you to speak. We are actually, the public comment period time was open for Liz Hamilton's on the amended addendum to, for the urgency. And so it was a courtesy. I know it's very difficult with the Zoom. I apologize that Emma did not recognize you. She's very good at recognizing. So what I'll have is Dr. Coons and Susie speak to you on that other item directly and appreciate you calling in. So.
Thank you very much, Bobby. I appreciate that and I'm looking forward to talking to Dr. Coons and Susie as soon as possible.
Thank you. So is there any other? Okay, so we don't see you if you're there and we apologize. So bringing it back to the board.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the items, the addendum as presented and the modification to include environmental health and OES's signatures.
One second. I do have a question for council. Do we have to have their names to the signatures up?
No, their titles.
They might change.
Motion by Supervisor Finley, second by Supervisor Groves. Supervisor Groves, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we can jump to subsequent. We have two of them, so we'll go with subsequent one. The agenda language adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local emergency in Trinity County due to the wildfires included in the August wildfire complex, specifically the Hopkins Fire and the Salmon Complex. I'll open it up to public. And bringing it back to the board.
I'll leave to accept as presented.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you.
Subsequent number two, agenda language adopt a resolution which confirms the continuance of a local health emergency in Trinity County due to unhealthy air quality caused by wildfires. Opening it to the public. Saying none, bringing it back to the board. Entertained on the motion?
It's a moot.
Second. Says wait for John.
I'm waiting for Judy.
Motion by Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Morris. Supervisor Morris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes our open session. I'll read the closed sessions in a moment, but I, I was expecting Angie Bigel, who is our auditor, to be present. And so I'm just going to make a quick announcement that I hope she can hear, that I would hope that she would be able to be present. We had a gift for you from the board supervisor administration. Dr. Coons will deliver to your and your staff on behalf of the achievement award that you earned for Trinity County for six consecutive years. Last year, we had a pizza party for the staff and so we hope to do something like that again. And since I'm indulging you, I just, I want to thank the veterans on behalf of the board supervisors and recognize them. It's special and I appreciate all their, their volunteerism. We have an amazing amount of veterans, both men and women, and when duty called, they have stepped up the plate. So I, I just wanted to say that in closing open session, I'll read the closed.
Chairman, is there going to be an opportunity for public comment on the closed session?
Yes, I'll read them individually and then open it for a closed session. So closed session item 6.1 pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N252 conference regarding COVID-19 participants, county health officer, county council, county administrative officer, and director of social services. Is there any questions from the board? Saying none, opening it to public. Okay, bringing it back to the board. Entertained a motion to, oh, just read the next one, sorry. 6.2 Government Code, section 54954.5C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases, two. And I apologize ahead of time for the mispronunciation of any names. Robert Carlson, Jake Grossman, Chris, Olivia Kokovo, Victor Bartonneau, Scott Merson, Nicholas Whitmester, Plantario, Pulse Incorporated, Farms of Trinity Forest, Tiger Gardens LLC, Green Rips LLC, and Does 1 through 10 versus County of Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court case number 20CV136. And in, regarding to, am I reading that right? Bankruptcy of Robert Byron Morris, Western District of Washington, U.S. Bankruptcy Court case number 1904072MJH. Sorry, there was something. Opening it to public.
Once again, Joe Brower from Junction City. This, this matter has festered, the, the issue of stacking of licenses has festered for two years. And your planning commissioners spent three very long nights wrestling with how to deal with stacking of cannabis licenses in Trinity County in a thoughtful way. And at the end of those three long nights, they came up with recommendations that pretty much everyone was in agreement with. And nobody got everything they were after, but it seemed workable and the folks that really do have good arguments for stacking on their single, on a single parcel, it allowed them to do that, especially on ag zoning, but with some restrictions and some limitations. And that was two years ago in October, so just over two years ago that process started. They wrapped that up in December. In February, the board of supervisors was dealing with cleaning up of the cultivation ordinance and an entire page of recommendations and it got removed from the amending of that ordinance, including the, the language that was a residency requirement, including the stacking language, bunch of other baby with bathwater got thrown out the window. So if the, if the intent of the supervisors was to implement those planning commission recommendations, but I believe there was a moment where Supervisor Groves said, whoa, 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 shouldn't that be assessed in an environmental document first? And you guys all agreed and Judy was chair and so she said, okay, well, let's drop that page, something like that. Ever since then, we're going on two years now, almost two years of this question, can you stack both, can you stack horizontally, can you stack vertically cannabis licenses in Trinity County? The horizontal stacking has been happening and it's really problem-free. It's been working and working well. But the issue of vertical stacking is best addressed in the planning commission recommendations and absolutely should have been included in our programmatic EIR, but was not. So I think the prudent thing to do is either to go back to original language or implement the planning commission recommendations, which are very simple, and fix this thing. And it should also be included in the environmental impact report. It's amazing that something like that didn't get included in the scope of the environmental impact report. So there are many, many folks trying to get their first licenses that would be blocked if few people get voted in.
Call reset so we can close session. Close session.